City Clerk Rose Marie Cole.
Good evening.
To her right is City Attorney David Margolis.
Good evening.
To his right is Councilmember Michael Menino.
Good evening.
To his right is our Vice Mayor David Albritton.
Good evening.
To my right is Councilmember Lena Texeda.
Good evening.
To her right is Councilmember Ryan Cotton.
Good evening.
To her right is City Manager Jennifer Poirier.
Good evening.
And to her right is Assistant City Manager Daniel Slaughter. With that, we'll move to item 4.1 on the agenda. Tonight, I'd like to call forward Eric Harris from CFY Program Manager to present the presentation on the Clearwater for Youth 2025 Scholarships.
Sorry, you guys.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I'm going to go ahead and toss it over here to our Vice Chair, Mr. Hoyt Hamilton.
Good evening, for those of you that don't know me. Now, it's a pleasure to be here tonight, and I'd like to call all of the young people that are here, that are being awarded scholarships by CFY. Please go forward. Councilman Mayor, as you all know, I sat up there for 14 years. And much of the, many of the things that you guys have to deal with are very intricate, very difficult at times. But let me tell you something. When you have to go through over 300 scholarship applications, and then try to rank them, your top 20, and then rank those top 20 from number one through number 20, it is an exercise that I recommend all of you do. It is a very, very rewarding. I can tell you that Assistant City Manager Slaughter is one of our Scholarship Committee members. So he knows exactly. He went through all those scholarships as well. So it is my pleasure, first of all, to let you know that our Chair, Fred Miller, is here tonight. And another one of our Scholarship Committee members, Bill Fisher, is here as well. So when I call your name, just kind of wave your name, wave your hand so everybody knows who you are. Oh, yes, and Mike Wallach is here as well. Mike is also one of our Scholarship people. So we've got great input and people a lot smarter than me helping. First, we have Sidney Wilhelm. Sidney is the recipient of the Halliday Family Scholarship, Brandy Halliday, the widow of Roy Halliday. Very supportive and on our board, has a scholarship every year. Sidney went to Clearwater High School. She's going to be ascending, attending St. Pete College, and then transferring beyond there after she receives her AA. She was All-State in softball. She is an All-Academic Softball recognition in the state of Florida. She was a swimming MVP and Offensive Player of the Year on the softball team. So she is very talented. And outside of her sports, she participated in the Pinellas County Leadership Summit. So she's going to do some great things in her future. Sidney, congratulations. Next, we have Pablo Vargas Arvisu. Is Pablo here?
Not here.
Not here. I will tell you real quick, he'll be attending St. Pete College. He was a varsity.
I'll mute it while they're doing that. Hey, PowerLies. Hey, MD. Yeah, I don't mind just listening if you guys just want to listen, or we can talk either way. I just want to see our crew. Oh, Haggis, have a wonderful dinner, darling. Enjoy. Have a PBJ for me. Yeah, it's public comment. And then item 7.2. And item 8.1. So there's three opportunities to speak, three minutes each. Yeah, I know. And we can just leave it off if you want to just chat. So people going tonight have an opportunity of nine minutes. And hello, Molly, and hello, Power. Really, enjoy your supper. I'm jealous. Wish I was out having a nice steak dinner or something, or some Thai food. Thai food sounds really good. Animal Audit Corner, no, we are not able to speak. They do not have call-in. We put out notice yesterday and the day before, well, ever since Monday, how to submit written comments. No, it looks, I don't see anybody behind there that we, there's a lot of suit and ties. Hey, Wise Mama, you got your snacks? Ooh, competition, nice. Wise Mama says, got my snacks and ready to go. Just heard on Erin's channel from the owner of some of the non-scientile restaurants, and seems someone else may also want to buy the street. That would make things a little interesting. Yummy, I haven't had dinner yet. It's a little bit after 6:00. Nothing really sounds good. Really, what are you eating, Amy? I did not catch your live Animal Audit Corner. Oreos and milk. I know, that sounds like a really good dinner. Was it your birthday, PowerLies? Or was it birthday cake Oreos? That sounds good, too. Everything sounds good when you're hungry. Right, Peter? And I know, I sent, I sent all that information to... You guys can't see me, roll my eyes. I sent it to people. And hopefully, people listened. Why does everybody want to call me when I'm on lives? Yes, it was. Her initial plea, and then his response, he gave a, just a, basically a, we know what we're doing, kind of a response, didn't he? I like it when Audit puts, puts her emails and her letters when she posts it, because we all learn. These, I know what these are, though. They're spam calls. That's... I didn't hardly ever get real phone calls. Got a phone call from my daughter earlier today. She goes, oh, just thought I'd let you know we're all alive. I'm like, okay, what happened? She haven't been watching the news? No. Apparently Tennessee, Tennessee Treasure Finder, Tennessee got hit big time with tornadoes last night. And they had one that was supposedly coming right at them, and it ended up going down the Mississippi. It got diverted, but, ooh, how scary. So that's what she gets for, like, moving to freaking Tennessee. Taking my grandbabies away from me. Hey, Granny T. You got a spam call yesterday? A canned spam? I get a lot of scam calls. Oh, was it? From being overweight, huh? How are you, Granny T? Haven't seen you in here before. We all get a chance. Then they're going to have to do a cheese moment. You know, I, there was, and it was, I guess it was a guy... I, there's so many spam and scam calls lately. I can't remember if he was like a doctor or something like that, or a dentist, chiropractor, something like that. And he was solo. Solo flight. Yeah, that's a shame. A banker. Oh, there you go. I knew it was some high-level position. Hey, Antics. We're kind of like just reading lips and... Right? I know, I want my rice with marinara sauce. Hi, hippie chick. Oh, here comes the cheese time. Yeah, it's, spam calls suck. I'm going to turn the volume back on just for a second. Let's see what they're saying.
Ray is here tonight? Whereas one of the most meaningful gifts that a human being can bestow upon another is the gift of life. And whereas over 104,000 men and women and children are currently on the national waiting list for organ transplantation, of which nearly 5,500 reside in Florida. And whereas 48,149, a historic number of organ transplants occurred in the calendar year 2024 in the United States thanks to the generosity of 24,018 deceased and living donors, of which LifeLink of Florida honored more donors than ever before, serving 361 organ donors who provided 936 life-saving...
I'm going to, they're doing a presentation about organ donation. Everybody should be an organ donor if you, if you love. I know I am, even if that's all they can take is my cataracts. To help somebody with cataracts. The street vacation is on the agenda. So we have public comment. And then there's two agenda items about it. The, yep, 7.2 and 8.1. And how are you doing, Kara? How are you doing today? Antics, I was looking for you earlier because we were trying to get ahold of Dusty, because I had some information if he wanted to use it to comment. But I sent it to Erin, and Wise Mama hopefully sent it to Erin. And, yeah, it's on the agenda. They don't have public comment on there. They forgot to put public comment on there. But 7.2 and 8.1. I did not email Cotton. I sent my comment in through the eComment. Right, Kathy? If I don't use it anymore, if I don't need it anymore, and somebody else can, they're more than welcome to it. So no, I did not get a response from Cotton. Let's see what they're talking about. Very cool.
So thank you for coming here tonight. That moved item 4.3 on the agenda, the National Library Week Proclamation. For this proclamation, I'd like to call forward Linda Rothstein from the Clearwater Library. She's our Assistant Director there. Whereas libraries provide the opportunity for everyone to pursue their passions and engage in life.
We're going to turn that down for just a minute while they read the... Hey, Adrian. How are you doing today? It's late for you guys. Big, yeah, there's a dark side to it, too, Antics. I know. Oh, good. Yep, it's a couple of pages. Yep, I saw that Dusty, Erin, Eric, Cheryl, and Mark Bunker. Turn the volume back on.
Before we move into the business portion of the program, I just want to, I want to ask those in attendance, obviously, we have a large group. Normally, we don't have an overflow room, but tonight we do. There's a couple of agendas, items that I know we've gotten a lot of communication on. And so we've got a lot of folks here probably that want to say a few words and, and exercise their right to say a few words. So I would just ask that you help us tonight, be respectful to the others in attendance, and do a couple of things. One is you have three minutes to speak. And there are lights on the front of the podium, which tells you when your time is up. And I know it may be an extra 15, 20 seconds that you want to add on to the end of your time. But if we all do that, if I give the latitude, everybody go over their time, whether I agree with what you say or you don't, it's going to cause for a longer evening. And more importantly, it's going to delay a chance for somebody. Could be, you know, could be a grandmother, could be a working mom, could be somebody that's got to get home to their kids, put them to bed. It's going to delay them having a chance to come here tonight and say the word. So please, three minutes for each speaker. There are ways you can have additional minutes to speak for somebody else. But please obey the lights up front as a courtesy to the others here and to give them the right to speak. The other thing I'd ask you, now, we do have decorum rooms, rules. They're on the back of the, of the wall. We're not asking anybody not to, to, we're not trying to take anybody's rights to come in here and speak. But we are asking you to be respectful of the others here. And particularly, when somebody's at the podium or someone in the dais is speaking, please don't interrupt them without first whatever. It's just going to, again, delay the progression of the meeting and cause someone who went out of their way, maybe they're here for the first time tonight, maybe they've never spoken at a city council meeting. It's going to take it longer for them to have their right to be said. So if we could all work together to respect one another and help each other have a chance to be heard, we'll have a better meeting, a more successful meeting. And we would appreciate that as a courtesy to the others here. With that, we'll move to item 5.1 on the agenda, approval of the minutes.
Take a motion to approve agenda item 5.1.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Move to the consent agenda. Are there any items to be pulled from the consent agenda tonight?
Yes, Mayor, I received a request to remove 6.2 and 6.4.
Okay. Is there a motion to?
Motion to approve agenda items 6.1 through 6.11, excluding 6.2 and 6.4.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Okay, we'll move to item 6.2.
Approve an event license agreement between Jones Lang LaSalle Americas, Inc. in the capacity as agent for the owner of the premises known as Countryside Mall, located at 27001 US Highway 19 North, Clearwater, Florida, and the City of Clearwater Police Department for the purpose of hosting a shred-a-thon and Operation Medicine Cabinet event on April 26, 2025, located at Countryside Mall, and authorize appropriate officials to execute same.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. As mentioned at the Monday work session, this is an event license agreement between the City of Clearwater and Jones Lang LaSalle Americas to host a shred-a-thon and a drug take-back on April 26. I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Is anyone here from the public desire to speak to agenda item 6.2?
I'm Mr. Haluba. This event license, while on the surface is not a bad thing, it appears to be somewhat unnecessary in the fact that it's a Clearwater Police public relations stunt. The idea is not a bad one until Clearwater Police get involved. I'd like to know, I haven't heard it, maybe the, the member, you know, Mr. Wallach can enlighten us. How are any of these drugs turned in, disposed of? Keeping in mind that Clearwater Police has a rather poor record when it comes to tipping off drug dealers, until caught by the Sheriff's Department. Will these shredded items be recycled or go to the incinerator like most of the recycling that we pay dearly for? This is recycling, Ms. Poyet. Got another example for you. This is recycling, too. What you are doing is not. What is the cost to the City of Clearwater for this event? I didn't see that listed anywhere. I feel this type of event, while good-natured, is best handled by the primary law enforcement entity, and that is Pinellas County Sheriff's Office. We don't need Clearwater Police.
Is there anyone else here from the public desire to speak to agenda item 6.2? If there's none, is there any council discussion?
Move to approve agenda item 6.2. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Agenda item 6.4.
Approve underground conversions agreement, UCA, and utility relocation agreement, URA, with Duke Energy LLC in the amounts of $671,431.56 to replace overhead power lines with new underground distribution lines and facilities on Myrtle Avenue from Cleveland Street to Court Street, and authorize appropriate officials to execute same.
Evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Marcus Williamson, Public Works Director. I won't rehash all of the information on this one from the working session. But this will bury the Duke power lines for both PSDA, City Hall, as well as MSB. So standing by for any questions.
Is anyone here from the public desire to speak to agenda item 6.4?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Ms. Poyet, Mr. Margolis and staff. I'm in support of this proposal, but would like to share with you that last year, I attended a meeting by the State Commission for Public Utility Rate Setting. And during the course of that meeting, on several occasions by different speakers, it was identified that the state had required, and I believe that's the correct word, Duke to set aside $2 billion for undergrounding utility lines. And if I understood from the work session, right now, this would be paid in part mostly by city funds and then by, also by a grant. And so I would just like to share that information with you that I think Duke should in fact be a participant in the cost of putting in this underground utility. And I think that during the, when they talked about the trees, either early last year or previously, even at that time, they indicated that they had money for undergrounding. Also, the city is looking at the potential of a alternative to Duke in terms of providing electric systems or electrics, electricity within the City of Clearwater. I think this is a good opportunity to see what kind of commitment we would have from Duke simply to participate in providing for the payment of this amount of money. And with that, I thank you. And I, and I believe that, obviously, we should go forward with this.
Thank you. Is anyone else here from the public desire to speak to agenda item 6.4?
Good evening, Councilmembers. I'm Bill, still Bill Johnson, 3694 Redford Court, West in Clearwater. And in, in order to expedite this meeting, I'd just like to second what Mr. Michael said.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak to agenda item 6.4? Not a council discussion. If there's none, is there a motion?
Move to approve agenda item 6.4. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. Thank you. We'll move to item 7.1.
Authorize a purchase order at 108 Fire Equipment, Inc., of Bradenton, Florida, for the purchase of two Pierce Velocity Pumpers and one Pierce Tractor Drawn Aerial in the amounts of $4,378,595.86 pursuant to Clearwater Code of Warrant to Section 2.563, Part 1, Part 1.
Wise Mama, aren't they doing general public comment? So we're doing 7.2 and 8.1, but I thought they did general public comment first. That's why I didn't see it on the, on the addenda. Huh, this, they're so confusing. Okay, I'll go back to listening.
For a total purchase price of $4,378,595.86. During our conversation, a concern was raised about utilizing future general fund dollars for these purchases. After some internal discussions, this agenda item has been updated, and these projects will be funded with penny for Pinellas, county fire tax, and current general fund revenues. No appropriation of future general fund monies will be used. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is anyone here from the public desire to speak to agenda item 7.1?
Six, what's the consent agenda, agenda item?
What's the consent agenda item? So they only pulled two?
I'm Blaine Enderly. You notice that he didn't give any picture of what's being purchased. None of you guys really know, except for you. And that's a big number. And the old fire trucks, do you know any data on it? How old were they? How many hours are on them? How many miles are on them? Bet you nobody. Now, we have to trust them. And everybody knows I don't trust anybody. Sorry, school of our knots. But we have the right to know or see what is being purchased. This verbal over and over and over and over has got to stop. Please, please make it stop. Let us know what you're purchasing. Let's see the old ones. Let's see how many hours are on them. Let's see the condition of them. You auctioning off everything, everything has got to stop. Thank you.
See anyone else here from the public desire to speak to agenda item 7.1?
Comment card too, eventually. I just have two comments on this fire apparatus.
Sir, your name?
Go ahead, I'm sorry, Mr. Culver. I just have two comments on this fire apparatus purchase. Can we paint it German red again? You remember that? And the second comment is, are we going to promote the interim chief? Because obviously we are still in that position where we don't have a fire chief, and rightfully so, I think he deserves that position. He's been with the city since I was a kid going up to Station 45. But at the same time, I feel like if he's not, or you guys aren't going to promote him, I think, just like we did in prior chiefs' past with Roland Harold and Chief Ellers and definitely unfortunately Jamie Greer, that those things, some of those purchases were delayed on before the city made those decisions on that. But obviously, Mr. Penn Gill's been with the department now for, I think, over 30 years or close to 30 years? 29, yep. So I just wish that somebody would pull the trigger and go ahead and promote the man, because obviously, if he wants it, he deserves it. But at the same time, that decision on new apparatus, as much as I support it, maybe it needs to wait until we get a firm chief or promote this guy. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here desire to speak to agenda item 7.1? Before I ask for any council discussion, just a lot of folks here don't know, maybe are unfamiliar with our process, but to the, oh, we have another speaker.
I couldn't walk this out. Again, good evening, Rudy Michaelx speaking. I'm speaking obviously in support of this equipment. I was especially appreciative of the style and strategic planning of the previous chief, who always was able to forecast out the needs of his department to make sure that he had continuous, well-run equipment and that the schedule, any time replacements needed, met the timelines, the guidelines in order to get that new piece of equipment online. I think it speaks well that the department has continued that process. I was personally very pleased to hear that we have resolved the funding mechanism, because I was very concerned about that, since in the past, we have followed this very same system in order to project and put in orders for equipment that were multi-years into the future to be repaired. And that's all I would have to say. Thank you very much.
See anyone else here from the public desire to speak to agenda item 7.1? Before I ask for council discussion, as I started to say, for those of you who are here watching our meetings for the first time, this is the second meeting we've had this week. We had a meeting on Monday work session where we had a full report on this equipment. We had documents showing, you know, how much it cost and details on what was required and what it did. So I didn't want the impression left that this is the first time we've discussed it, because we've discussed it already one this week. So with that, is there any council discussion? Okay, is there a motion?
Make motion to approve agenda item 7.1.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. We are going to take 8.5 out of orders. At this time, I'd like to call agenda 8.5.
Mayor, 8.5 is the second reading of the budget ordinance. So this is ordinance number 9819-25, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the operating budget for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2025, to reflect increases and decreases in revenues and expenditures for the General Fund, Solid Waste and Recycling Fund, Administrative Services Fund, Special Development Fund, and Special Program Fund, as provided herein, providing an effective date.
See anyone here from the public desire to speak to agenda item 8.5? If there's none, is there any council discussion? If not, is there a motion?
Motion to approve agenda item 8.5.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Agenda item 8.6.
8.6 is the second reading of the capital improvement budget amendment, and that type of order momentarily.
They're making sure that they get their budget.
We have ordinance number 9820-25, an ordinance of the City of Clearwater, Florida, amending the capital improvement budget for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2025, to reflect an increase of $10,723,638, providing an effective date.
Does anyone here from the public desire to speak to agenda item 8.6? Now, is there any council discussion? If no council discussion, is there a motion?
Move to approve agenda item 8.6. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Now, we will go back to agenda item 7.2.
Mayor, if I may, I want to take a moment to provide the context ahead of this discussion on this item. Given the complexity and the sensitivity of these negotiations, if you would please just allow me time to provide some background on the steps that got us here today. As you know, the Church of Scientology has been planning for several years to build a large event hall on the property just south of the flag building. As part of their project approval process, in December, they submitted a vacation right-of-way for a one-block portion of Garden Avenue. The city is required to respond to that vacation request. Upon this review by legal, it was determined that by operation of law, the city has title to that parcel. In order to vacate the right-of-way, the city would have to sell or trade the property. That is a reflection of market value. The city is also required to post that property for 30 days in order to determine if any other interest exists. As such, the city council unanimously directed that I engage with negotiations with the Church of Scientology regarding the purchase and sale of this portion of Garden Avenue. Since then, I worked individually with council to seek input and learn their priorities before opening negotiations. During negotiations, I advocated the priorities of every council member. Unfortunately, the Church of Scientology did not agree to all of those priorities. Given the historical and community interest surrounding this issue, we anticipated a large range of perspectives, opinions, and challenges that brought forth both the community and the council as to what an appropriate deal would look like. What is being brought forward today is a result of those negotiations. The agreement meets the majority of the broad goals set by city council. It provides the city a fair market price as validated by three appraisals the city received for the property. It creates new green space that will be open to the public, and the property will not exchange ownership until the building is completed. I will now turn this over to Tom Mahoney, who will provide the staff report.
Evening, Council, Tom Mahoney, Public Works. So this item is to declare the vacated portion the city manager spoke of for surplus and sale. The purchase price is 1.375 million, and the city will maintain any necessary easements over their utilities. And I'll try to answer any questions if you have.
On this, we don't have a reading, right? It's the one that's further down. Okay, thank you. Okay, well, let's get going. I think there are some folks here that want to speak on this topic. So is there anyone here from the public that desires to speak to agenda item 7.2? If you could, if you want to speak, I think there are a number of you. If you could just line up over here, and we'll just take you one by one. And again, as we said earlier, if you don't have a comment card, please fill it out and give that to the clerk before or after you speak. Thank you. Mr. Haluba?
I'm Mr. Haluba. This is a very bad idea. Sets a very bad precedent. Now, there was, once upon a time, let's say a woman being pursued by, let's say, a man for unseemly and amorous reasons. The lady rejected all of the increasing monetary offers to sell herself until a tentative agreement was made for several thousand dollars. Then the offer was reduced to $50. The lady retorted angrily, "What do you think I am?" Well, the answer was and remains, we've established that. Now we're just haggling over price. The blocking off of Garden Street is a very bad idea. It's a bad idea for many reasons. It will only ultimately result in another vacant building. This in no way will endear or promote downtown to the general public. It will prove Clearwater is subservient to and caters to a small and shrinking subset. This action will further debase and undermine downtown. Don't be hoodwinked by some slick video, Mr. Cotton.
Yes.
Reject this proposal.
Yes.
Wake up, Mr. Allbritton. Wake up. Don't sell the citizens out.
Well.
Mr. Manino, your argument?
If the shoe fits.
For this proposal is just full of suspicion. Don't sell us out. Some things, like honor and respect, should never be for sale. Don't abandon your values. Don't be exploited. Don't be persuaded to do something that's wrongful. Don't sacrifice your principles. Don't bastardize the privilege of being an elected official. Don't sell your souls to the devil. Vote against this proposal.
Thank you.
Amen, brother.
This next speaker, please, yeah?
I guess it's a bad day to go for Cory Booker's record. That which I'm about to present follows from a collaboration of two Clearwater residents, myself and John Bandbach. Our professional careers and experience are particularly well-suited for the analyses we are highlighting. It's hard to boil this down in just three minutes, so we delivered a written and more expansive version of our thoughts to council members earlier today, as well as to the city manager. I have extra hard copies if someone, anyone, would care for them. Our conclusion is quite simple. Despite references to fair market value in all agenda descriptions, the price of 1.375 million is decidedly well below fair market value of what this city is receiving in return.
Right.
That's due to the terms of the contract. Our hope is to prevent the execution of a document exposing the city and/or council members to adverse scrutiny, or worse, perhaps even possible litigation. Furthermore, we do not want the city to set a precedent, that precedent being selling below fair market value that others will attempt to exploit. The city commissioned two appraisals, one of which noted the 1,375, that is in the draft contract, the other of which returned two figures, $935,000, if the property was sold to someone who did not own an adjacent property, to the one question. But the other was 1,700,000, if sold to somebody who owned an adjacent property. Now, that's significantly more. Scientology is the only adjacent property owner in this case. And fact of the matter is, that issue was not addressed by the first appraiser, who came up with 1,375,000. And so the only appraiser that took account of the proper or the correct facts in this situation was the appraiser that came through with 1,700,000. So that's only the first reason why we argue that the price inherent in this contract is well below market. Next, both appraisers provided valuations that assume there are, and I quote, "no special terms in favor of the buyer," i.e. that the buyer pays cash upfront like a traditional property transfer. However, that is not the case with this contract. Scientology pays nothing upfront and is not required to pay anything for over five years. More than that, they can let that five years go by and then choose not to purchase.
Unbelievable.
This makes this an options contract, not a property purchase contract. The world of finance is governed by a number of truisms. Among them are one, that receiving a dollar now is worth more than receiving a dollar five years from now.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time, yeah. Next speaker, thank you. Appreciate the applause, folks, but it really does slow us down a bit. So appreciate you, appreciate you. I mean, if you don't want to respect each other, that's fine. But I mean, if we could all just get through this, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
Good evening, and thank you for your time. I'll talk faster. I know that the city has done similar transactions in the past, but not with this buyer and not with the massive unoccupied storefronts that we have today. That has risen each year, shows a lack of good faith on the buyer to fulfill the storefronts and fill them with leases that have been taken for years. We moved down here in 2008 from Philadelphia. Negotiations, each side wins a bit, loses a bit. You know, in exchange for a two- to four-year activation plan in negotiations, you know, why are we selling the property for the 1.4 million dollars? Steve pointed out, 1.7 million dollars, rather than a 27.6% discount is what we're receiving on our funds by waiting six years to get the money. Don't rush into the deal, negotiate longer, or take a hiatus if the buyer's not willing to discuss activation in the process. Or as an alternative, to protect this land of the property, transfer to Scientology, what you could do is instead of waiting for five years, do it for some money upfront and do it sooner, but have some teeth in the agreement that, you know, and I know we have contracts on the panel, have an agreement with teeth in it that does penalties throughout the entire process. By the time 2031 comes around, okay, this council is not going to be here. The city needs to be protected. And come up with some reasonable mixture of the items that they want and you want, or we want, which is the activation of the storefronts. Because, you know, just coming up on a meeting with the city manager, you know, I'm looking out in the block between Fifth Street and Sixth Street on the South Side, and the whole South Side's empty. Okay, it's looking like a ghost town. It's not as vibrant as it was back when we had a Friday night event and people were coming in here. So the bottom line is, don't sell out at a price that's not fair market value. And get some teeth in it and exercise, you know, true negotiation contracts where each side loses and each side wins. Okay, what this is, is a one-way street with an option, as Steve pointed out, that's not fair market value. And if you factor in the fact that this has some additional value to the buyer because there are other properties, it should be a higher price. Okay, but if it's not about price, let it be about activation and not let Clearwater become more of a ghost town than where you've had experience. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Rose, I think you have a card.
Yes, Lisa Welch Spriggs. If you can raise your hand. Okay. And Elizabeth Grayson, thank you. You have five minutes.
Thank you. Good evening again. The reason I'm here, first, I'm going to give you a history lesson. I had a one-on-one meeting with David Miscavige over a decade ago. And he had in the room with him a nationally-recognized retail developer. And he had beautiful pictures of what he was going to create on Cleveland Street, because he was tired of having to bus his people, his visitors... his visitors, over to Hyde Park in Tampa. But part of that meeting was, we were negotiating the purchase of the CMA property next to the old City Hall so that the city ultimately can develop the bluff as you guys are moving forward with. And in that meeting, David pounded on the table and he says, "Dammit, Hoyt, I want that property." And I said, "If I were in your shoes, I'd want that property too," but I pounded the table and I said, "But damn it, David, I want it too, and I'm going to buy it." And we, as a council, bought it for 4-point-something million dollars, if I recall. And what did David do? He took his ball and ran home. He claims, Scientology claims-
Yes.
...that they're community partners. Community partners don't only do things that benefit themselves, they do things that benefit the entire community. Owning block after block of property that stays vacant month after month and year after year is not a community partner. So what I'm urging you to do is, I'm not saying don't sell this property to the church ultimately, what I'm saying is, don't do it tonight. Don't commit to it tonight.
Amen. Amen, right?
They need to show that they are community partners because they need to do things... Where is that plan that he was going to do? He was going to make Cleveland Street look like Hyde Park in Tampa with quality retail and quality restaurants. We've got a couple of quality restaurants. We got nothing else. Ten years later, well, we have more vacant buildings that they have purchased. So it's time to hold their feet to the fire for a change and say, "Show us something. Show us you're going to develop Cleveland Street and put that quality retail in there that all of citizens of Clearwater can benefit from and would probably take advantage of." But until they do that, I would not give them this. They want this because it's on, my understanding, it's the, on the west side of their building is their entrance into this structure they want to build, and they want to have a more landscaped and pretty entrance into their building. I don't blame them, but they got to show us something. They need to show you something. So if not, let them have a street and a park, and some parking spaces in front of their building. Because, like I say, what they do build looks great, but how many people in this room can walk into any of them just for the hell of it? Nobody. Nobody.
Right.
So it is time for them to step up and be the community partner they claim they are. Because the other part of it is, what they're building is an entertainment venue. My question is, when they build it, is it going to be strictly for their use? If it is, no problem, but you need that in writing because if they're going to get Live Nation to come in here and book entertainment in there and compete with the two entertainment venues the city already has, we're losers on this deal. So I urge at least one of you, but I think all three of you changing your vote and presenting a 5-0 vote to Scientology on this issue tonight would send a much stronger message because they've claimed for 40 years that they're community partners. I've lived here for 66 years, almost 67. They're not, they've not shown very many times, other than showing up at some events, but I don't know anybody in here, I don't know any of, I know none of you, I know I, would never buy a building to let it sit vacant. If I'm going to buy a building, I'm going to know exactly what I'm going to do with it after I buy it. I'm going to be right down to the city's planning department asking for a permit, and I'm going to make it into what I want it to be. So don't postpone this vote. Vote no. I'd rather you vote no, but make them show-
Right, right, mama, right.
-a partnership with this city and a commitment to this community before you do this because that's what the citizens of Clearwater deserve. Thank you.
Next speaker, thank you.
I know we're not supposed to applaud Mark Bunker, by the way.
One second, one second. Don Temeter, is he, are you here? Don?
I'll give you my number.
Where? Okay, thank you. And Patty? Thank you. So you have five minutes.
Thank you. I really have to thank Hoyt for that history lesson because it's extremely important. You know, the council, when they said no in 2017, Miscavige said, "All right, I'll wait for the next council." The next council, he got me, and he said, "I'll wait for the next council." Now he has you. That video that you loved, Ryan, that beautiful video, that if only the public could see this video, they would love having the L. Ron Hubbard Hall here. There's a reason Miscavige doesn't show that to the public because it says "L. Ron Hubbard Hall" on it, and he knows the public here don't like Scientology. You know, there's another very, very beautiful video, very similar to that, I'm sure the production value of the LRH Hall is just as great. You can see that one right now. You can go to Cleveland Street Alliance, and there's a video there about how three buildings on Cleveland Street are being restored, and it is remarkable, it's such a well-produced video. Nowhere in there does it say Scientology, or L. Ron Hubbard, or David Miscavige, but he's the one who snapped his fingers to make that happen, to try to get something from the city, and that is a front group that he created expressly to hide the fact that Scientology's involvement in those buildings is what making that, is what is making that happen. I would urge you not to sell the street. Miscavige didn't go halfway with you, it appears. You had things you wanted in the deal, and he said, "Nah." I would say this to you, Miscavige doesn't need the street. He doesn't. He wants the street. Personally, I think it's so he can stop any protest in front of L. Ron Hubbard Hall. And for him, 1.3 million dollars, that's chump change. He's happy to pay that. And frankly, it's an insult that he's paying market value because, you know, all those buildings he secretly bought up after 2017, when the city was bold enough to say no to him, he paid two, four, or six times market value for those buildings he's been leaving empty.
Yeah.
No problem there, but with the city, eh, I'll give you market value, in fact, I'm not even going to give it to you now. Down the line, I'll probably give it to you, can't guarantee it. If he wants to stop protests in front of L. Ron Hubbard Hall, all he has to do is get an event permit. So on those nights, nobody can protest. The rest of the time, council member Tesheda, Mr. Mayor, and all the other citizens who use that street on a regular basis will still be able to use the street. There's nothing really in it for you to give Miscavige what he wants. You know, as I said, I think Miscavige is trying to stop protests. We just saw a protester last week get arrested. Erica was arrested and spent a night in jail, and she's been protesting from the exact same spot for 14 months, and it was not a problem. So I hope this is not any type of crackdown on protests. I don't think it is, but I hope it's not. Let me ask you this, because this is my real concern. Say Miscavige comes through with everything that he promised back in 2017, and he's going to build up all the buildings downtown, make them look gorgeous, he's going to put businesses in, what happens if the business fails? Does Miscavige have to put another business in? And another business?
Works.
What if all of them fail? And Miscavige looks around and goes, "Huh, we made a pretty downtown, and no one wants to come down here. I wonder why." And decides, "Let's just tear down all of those buildings, and let's build expensive condos for wealthy Scientologists. They can live right next to Flag, they can walk over and do their auditing, and then another block away, they can go to the L. Ron Hubbard Hall and listen to Miscavige drone on and on for three hours before jumping to their feet and shouting, 'Hip, hip, hooray.'" That is what I'm worried is going to be the future of downtown Clearwater. The people of Clearwater do not want a downtown Clearwater controlled by Miscavige. That's what the council in 2017 said. It's true today, so I urge you, do not sell this street. It's the city streets. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next, who's our next speaker? Reverend Swick.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, city council, staff. My name is Father Bob Swick, and at the risk of being stoned-
Thank you, Aze.
-I'd like to just make some comments about my view on the people that I've known that represent Scientology. I see a side of them that most don't. In our veterans organization for almost 15 years now, they've been one of the strongest supporters we've had in our community. When it comes to hurricanes, I've seen them out in the street cleaning up. I've seen them throughout Pinellas County cleaning up. Every year, the nation recognizes those that have served in combat and have been wounded or died in combat, and we have what's called the Military Order of the Purple Heart, MOPH. Six years now, that organization, we call Scientology, has supported with a dinner, and this year, we're expecting some 500 people come at no cost, at the cost of the hosts themselves at the Fort Harrison Hotel. I see a side of Scientology that most don't. I'm not arguing one point or the other. There have been some very, very good statements made already with regard to caution, and I support that as well. But I do want, on the record, to be recognized that these are our neighbors and with some very, very good side to them, a side that isn't talked about at all, and I stand for them. I'm asking for a police escort to get out of here. God bless you all.
Thank you, Father Bob. As a former Marine, I think you can take care of yourself. Thank you, Father Bob.
Yeah, you all can get out.
Next speaker.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. My name is Nanette Prevost, and I reside in Largo. I'm also a nurse, a surgery nurse at Morton Plant here, 38 years, and I do organ donation. I'm part of that team, actually, and we were talking about that earlier, but I want to elaborate how my connection with Scientology. I'm not a member of the church, by the way, but I am a nonprofit. So I started the nonprofit during COVID, and I've been boots on the ground during our hurricanes here for 18 weeks, and I turned around and actually registered our nonprofit with FEMA, and now I'm working on implementing a plan for disaster preparedness with the Pinellas County Sheriff Office. But what I want to express my strong support for the development of this new event center in our county. As the founder and CEO of Remember Me NFP, we're a locally rooted nonprofit dedicated to trauma-informed mental health education, suicide prevention, drug overdose, and emergency preparedness across our coastal beach communities. I believe this facility would serve as a critical venue for organizations like ours to expand community engagement and life-saving outreach. Our mission is to provide accessible, evidence-based education and emergency services that directly support public health and safety. As a lived experience survivor of suicide loss, I have committed my life to ensuring that no family walks through the same tragedy alone. Our work is deeply personal and rooted in both professional expertise and human compassion.
You've never heard the lived experience story?
I just recently won a van in the nonprofit, so we are actually a mobile mental health crisis unit. Next week, I'll be purchasing an AED for water rescues along our coast, and thank you for Clearwater for actually having lifeguards on your beach because we do not have lifeguards from Bellier Beach on down. So this is one of the missions that I'm bringing out. As a nurse, we're all doctors and nurses and pharmacists and lived experience.
Is this regarding this agenda item?
Yeah, it is. Well, what I wanted to say, my collaboration, you should be very lucky that the drug-free world is here and the Citizens Commission, because, you know, I've been tracking toxicology reports. We have a lot of problems when it comes to drug overdose and suicides, and they have a wonderful, wonderful, a lot of literature in there when it comes to mental health drugs.
Oh, gag me with this.
And we need to really get a grip on this. Our suicide is off the charts, and there's a lot of that's because of mental health drugs and the toxicology reports, and that needs to be addressed, and you guys really should be thankful that they're here when it comes to that education.
SPTP fan, this lady needs to be booed.
Because you're going to be hearing a lot more about that in the future.
That elderly gentleman was-
Next speaker, please.
She needs to be booed.
I'm Kelly Meyer. I apologize. I hope that my fellow citizens, give me grace, please, I just have a few seconds. We're unclear of the procedures and just wanted to make everyone aware, if you're not, that there's an alternative proposal, but we're not sure when in the process we'll be able to present that alternative to selling South Garden to the Church of Scientology. So if you could let us know, thank you.
Do we want to address that at the end after all the public has commented, or should they make their presentation as part of their public comments?
Candidly, I'm not sure if this is a proposal that the city has. In fact, the one we've received this afternoon, is that the proposal, or something else we're referring to? I think it's up to the council to decide. I mean, I certainly think that anyone who wants to make a proposal is entitled to be heard before the council, so I certainly would encourage you to hear, listen to the proposal. However, because that proposal, as I understand it, was just submitted this afternoon, I don't know that there's been time for anybody to digest it, so I think what would have to happen is for the council to, at your time of choosing, invite that proposal to be made to you so that you can listen to it first and then decide as a body whether you would like to discuss that proposal in greater detail at this time, whether you would like staff to evaluate it, or whether you are comfortable moving forward with the proposal as it stands today with the Church Scientology. So I think the first step would be to listen to the proposal, and then council can decide as a body what you'd like to do with that information.
So I think her question is, should they present it now?
I think that would be, given that it's the, given that the agenda item does not distinguish between anything-
This and the other.
Right. I think it's within the chair's prerogative whether you'd like to either have them.
I think we go ahead and, there's no objection, I think we go ahead and, if someone has a proposal to present, I think we should go ahead and... Any objection from any other council members on here? So Kelly, whoever has the proposal, would they like to present it now? Excuse us, we're going to just digress. You'll be very first, right after this proposal.
Cheryl gets to go twice. No, ASL did not speak yet. Cheryl was just up.
He's not done, he's just presenting.
This is taking up part of the 60 frickin' minutes.
Hey, thank you for your service. I'm Brooks Gibbs, a Clearwater resident. This is Tony. Tony, good to see you. I'm really excited, actually, about the opportunity of the street being available. I think it's exciting, and when I think the open bid process, you have 30 days to do it, today was the last day, you know, I didn't hear about it. March 17th, there was a woman by the name of Ms. Barbara Sorylev. She runs the wonderful little organization called the Clearwater African-American Foundation, and she had said and made it into the paper, and that's how I heard about it, that she would love to see the city dedicate some space to honor the African-American heritage that's there. Of course, that particular area of Garden Avenue is one of three critical, kind of like original parts of the city that has some great heritage, and I went ahead and researched her. And I went ahead and researched her, and I was inspired by her suggestion. I kind of got the sense it might have been ignored. And then I researched every article about her. I talked to several people about her, just to understand her reputation. I finally got hold of her, and I said, what's your vision for that space? If we could get you that street, what would you like to use it for? And she explained to me that she would like it to be a memorial for the African American community, especially in the sad aftermath of the fiasco of the burial situation that the CRA is struggling with. And I understand, under a lawsuit right now, I don't know the details of that, and forgive me if I'm misspeaking in any way she performed, but I just know it's a sensitive issue, and the city wants to show good faith and be able to say, we know we made a mistake, we'll make it right. There's been some remains found on a certain piece of property, and part of our due diligence and to honor the past is to dedicate part of our community to that particular people and their heritage. So talking with this wonderful president of this organization, she said, I'd like to call it the Mac Dixon Memorial Garden. Mac Dixon was a, one of the pioneers in the early 1900s. There's actually a Mac Dixon neighborhood named after him. He's probably the most commented-on African American person that people are inspired by his family, his descendants are still alive today. In fact, I believe that the burial site of remains that were recently discovered, there was one of three headstones, his being one of them, that were also discovered. And speaking with Ms. Barbara Sorrie Love, who runs the Clearwater African American Association, she says, I'd love to see right there a memorial in his name. And so I dreamed a little with her, I sketched some things out, I put together a proposal, and I made it before the deadline because I had just heard about this. And I'd like to answer any questions that you have, but I think that would, I'm more for, not against type of a person. I want to preach for something, I want to see us do something awesome. And I thought, this is a good solution, and I think Clearwater would be all behind it 100%. So any questions for me about the proposal that I've submitted to you in writing today?
I do have a couple of questions. I thank you for getting it in. I know you mentioned it was kind of late in the day, but we work until the work's done.
Yeah, you do.
So the majority of us grabbed it and dove into it, so I thank you for doing the work to get this to it. I did have a couple of questions. My original one goes back to the map, because the site plan, and I just was kind of, because the site plan kind of makes it look like your park is on the Church of Scientology property, so I wasn't sure. Is there some partnership that isn't in this that we're not seeing or hearing?
Oh, well, thank you. You know, because of the short amount of time, all I could do is a basic sketch, but the idea is you have, what, .4 acres there, or something to that effect between .4 and .65. We still want to keep that a thoroughfare. I think that would be the preference of the council, as well as citizens, who want to get off Court Street, take a right, and go up Garden Avenue. And so I think we can make that into a one-way, so they can get up towards Franklin to be relieved out of traffic. But then you have all this land still there that could make a beautiful fenced-in park. And the planes we have for the park, I went into great detail in the proposal, it honors seven heroes of the African American community. It has vintage playground equipment that children would have played in the 1900s. It'd be, it's a half a million dollar project that we would pay for. And so it's a beautiful, I think it's going to be a treasure, and certainly honoring our African American members in our community who care about their heritage.
I appreciate, just the map doesn't make it look kind of, in a sense, realistic that in one lane with a sidewalk on each side, we'd be able to fit a one-way thoroughfare parking, two swing sets, a pavilion, a park. I mean, it sounds like a great idea. I'm not telling you it's a bad idea. It just, I don't know.
I love that you love the idea, but may I confess, I'm not an artist. You know what I'm saying? If I was able to work with, if we have time, then we could obviously work with the city to make this as beautiful, as functional as it could possibly be. I think it's a beautiful solution.
Thank you for answering that. My other question was, I noticed in here it said $500,000 over three years. That's not 500 each year, right? You're saying 500 total?
Right. From what I understand, I was looking at the proposal, the alternative proposal of $1.375 million that's going to be paid at the end of the construction, that's six years from now. I'm saying we can complete this in three years, and less, actually, depending on how vibrant the community of Clearwater is saying, let's get this done. It might be a million-dollar park. I wouldn't be surprised if Clearwater says, that's perfect, let's honor our African American heritage. And by the way, I believe the CRA, the Clearwater Redevelopment Agency is really, one of their missions, from what I understand, is to preserve the heritage of this community. And when I was listening to Ms. Barbara, I was just realizing, this is exactly what you guys are wanting to do as part of the CRA. So to me, this fits more than the other proposal that's a competitor.
My other last question, sorry, I just had a couple of them, because I did obviously read this before we came. When it's dedicated to Ms. Barbara Sorrie Love's organization?
No, it's in partnership with. It's actually dedicated to one of the heroes of our founding fathers here in Clearwater in 1905.
My question is, who becomes responsible for the maintenance, the upkeep?
Yeah, as it says in the agreement, it says it's a partnership with the Park and Recreation. If in negotiations, the council says, we need to see that the organization, the collective taking responsibility for the care of this property is going to front that bill, fine, we can do that. But I think that the city can maintain ownership of the property. They can commit this property to this particular people group for honor, especially in the aftermath of this terrible situation that we find ourselves in. And, you know, Park and Recreation can add it to their areas of care.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cotton?
Yeah, I had a few questions as well in regards to the 500,000 total sum. Do we already have, or your organization already have developers or people that are fronting this money, or is this just what you're, as it says, estimated cost? So we don't know that this...
Yeah, so I've secured half a million dollars, but I can see that my alternative, you know, my competitor for this particular project does not have to come up with that money until, you know, years from now. They don't even have to start until five years. So I'd say, hey, give me three years, and we'll get it done, and...
Is that true, Mr. McGollis, to the extent that Scientology will not be paying for the property for five years?
Six, post-construction, forgive me.
Because...
It doesn't transfer.
Correct.
Until certification of occupancy.
As, right, that is correct. As drafted, and like most real estate contracts, the funds do not transfer until closing. As currently drafted, at least, the closing does not occur until the building is completed on the logic that if the city were to potentially convey title at the beginning, and then they didn't complete the project, you would have lost control over the property,
Correct.
Lost title to the property. Yes, you would have gotten money upfront, but you wouldn't have gotten the project. And so it really depends on what the city's priorities are in that regard. But as drafted, it is true that, number one, funds don't transfer until closing; number two, closing does not occur unless and until they build the project.
And then after that, the taxpayer reassurances that we have that are written into it, there's $300,000 fines that are associated with that. And how did we come to that number? Could you explain to how we came to that number?
$300,000 per year is the amount that the buyer, which in this case, prospectively is the church, would have to pay in order to extend the closing. So the closing, as currently drafted, needs to occur by the end of 2031, meaning they need to finish the project by the end of 2031. If that does not occur, they're delayed, they don't build it, they sit around, whatever they end up doing, the church has the option to extend at $300,000 per year, non-refundable to the city. So that would mean, for example, if the city were to approve the deal as drafted, and let's say the closing were to occur in 2032, and they finished the project in 2032, the total funds coming to the city would be $1.375 billion plus $300,000, so it'd be $1.675 million, as an example.
Understood. And then what is the exact timeline to where, if they don't have anything completed, the city can take action to reclaim the property?
I don't think there'd be any reclaiming, because the transfer doesn't even occur unless and until they were to complete the project. However, it really depends on whether they're willing to pay the extension fees as currently drafted. If they did not take any action and did not pay the extension fees, then at that point, the city would be able to withdraw from the agreement at the end of 2031, or I guess I would say January 1st of 2032. Conversely, if they delayed for that long and then they did pay the extension fees, the church would have the option to extend as late as the end of 2033 to finish the project. One of the more interesting scenarios would be if the church got a very late start on this, and then, let's say hypothetically, they didn't start building it until 2031, but they haven't finished the project in the middle of 2033. That puts them in a pretty strange box, because they will have paid non-refundable extension fees to the city, and at the end of 2033, if the project is half-built, or if it's not finished at that time, the city would be able to withdraw from the contract and keep the, you know, $600,000 in extension fees. At least that's how it's currently drafted.
Correct. And anything that they may have developed on that property from that time forward?
They wouldn't develop anything on the property until the actual sale of the property. So we'll remain a street until they're substantially completed or completed with their project.
I would generally agree with Councilmember Albreton on that, with the only caveat being that part of what is contemplated as drafted is a temporary construction easement. So once they get their building permits approved, there would likely at some point be a construction easement, so that they would be able to stage construction equipment. But to Mr. Albreton's point, I don't think they're going to be building anything, I don't think they could build anything on Garden Avenue until they actually had title to the land.
Any other questions?
I would like to emphasize that, I'm sorry.
No, no, you can go ahead, please.
Really, it's going, we're already going to be here a long time. More disruption, the more people talking over the top of speakers, talking over the top of folks up front, it's just going to drag it out. So if you can't avoid interrupting speakers, please, please wait outside. Just ask everybody to help, be kind.
I'd like to hear the truth, so help.
Well, again, if you can't, if you can't stop yourself from interrupting others, please show respect. We've got another issue on the agenda.
Can I get quiet for three minutes, then? And I will be quiet until I say yes.
You can leave, okay? If you've had your three minutes. I don't know why it would be really hard, you're an adult, to be respectful to the other people here.
I'm glad they don't feel respectful.
You're being disrespectful, and this is your last one.
What you're reporting is false information.
Well, do you want to stay or not? I'm asking, I'm asking you to leave if you can't stop interrupting people. Thank you.
So with that, thank you, David, for going over all those portions of the contract. Back to the estimated project cost of 500,000 over the three years, the deferment. One of the things that I think we can all agree on, especially within the budget sessions that we've been looking at, is trying to tighten up our budget and adding another additional cost to a park, which is our second-largest slice of our budget pie. I would just be very, take pause to that because of, we already have so many parks that we're taking care of.
We're asking questions, right? We're going to come back and talk.
Well, that's the question I have. So aside from pushing forward, you know, or deferring this, do you have any estimates of what that would cost the city over years, or is there like a public-private partnership that you've thought about doing and naming rights with this park to offset those costs?
That's exactly what it'd be, that's exactly what it'd be, a public-private partnership if we go that model, and that would simply mean it'd be a nonprofit, we lease it for 30 years for a dollar a year, we take all the expense to take care of it, and then there's some terms that the city could obviously seize the property back if it's not meeting the standard of care and beautification that the city requires. We wouldn't let that happen, because we really care about this project. But I was suggesting in the proposal that you simply maintain ownership of it, and then you dedicate it as a gesture of goodwill and good faith to the African American community, especially those who are memorialized, because that's a real, that's a really important issue. You know, you talk to people, and they really care about the graves and the remains that were paved over and built on, and the city didn't seem to care, and it's a disaster. And I just think that this is a way we could be part of the solution, and it would go really far, I think, with our key stakeholders. So if you are concerned about the price of maintaining the park, then that's, I would hope that you would give me the same amount of time that you gave the Church of Scientology to negotiate the terms, and so that we could get our team together and say, done, consider it done.
I mean, I appreciate that sentiment, but how long have we had this for bid, David? It's been out for 30 days at least, right?
The Community Redevelopment Act requires 30-plus days of advertising. It has been advertised in accordance with Florida law.
Yeah, I did a FOIA.
And then I saw this document at roughly 4:00 PM today.
Right, but it is within the window, and I will say this to my defense, and I did a FOIA, and your clerk, the whole team, has been so professional, I cannot tell you what a blessing it is to communicate with you guys, truly, because I'm trying to get this project done, and you've been very helpful. I only saw it at the Tampa Bay Times, according to the Freedom of Information Act. I was hoping to see, I think I would have been alerted if it was on the city website. My recommendation is that you make that part of the mandatory, you know, publication. If you're going to do something, please put it on your website, because I think you have to subscribe to actually see some of these declarations are, you know, open for bids, because a lot of people don't know about it. So to my defense, I just learned about it, and I'm so excited to be working within the window that you required to provide you a proposal. My apologies.
No, absolutely. You got it within the proposed time limit, it's just when we're asking about time.
Totally, totally.
So I get it. I appreciate you for answering my questions. Thank you very much. Thank you, David, for going through all those parts of the contract.
Any other questions? Okay. Well, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for presenting your proposal. I guess before we go to the kind lady who's been...
Say, he is part of my team, and I just, I didn't ask him if he had anything else he wanted to share.
I have public comment, I have a few minutes to speak. Oh, okay.
Was he ahead of you?
No.
Before he goes, I guess I should ask, is there anyone else here that wants to present a proposal?
Just so you know, this is 7.2, and I asked earlier about this being taken off the agenda, which it was, but when you mentioned it, I think everybody thought it was 8.1, the second vacating in the street, because it's very confusing. So I'm going to speak on 8.2, but I'd like to speak on 7.2 also.
You can, yes. But I'm asking right now, is anybody else, like the gentleman who just presented a proposal, is there anyone else that wants to present an alternative proposal? Okay, all right, well, you can go ahead.
Do you have a card?
I do. I gave it to this gentleman.
May I have the card, so I can see how many minutes he's collected?
Four minutes. My wife's in the other room, it's full, so she gave me two minutes.
Oh, here we go. I'm sorry, I did have it. Okay, Jessica?
Yeah, Jessica's in the other room, because it was pretty packed today.
Well, I need her to come in real quick, and then I've, I only have that one.
Would you mind if the lady goes ahead of you first?
If you can get her to come in, I'd appreciate it.
I'll take, I'll take...
Ms. Fullerton?
I'm sorry for the noise, guys.
Thank you for patient with the lady.
Go ahead. Say your name, I start where you stand.
Oh, sorry, okay. My name is Cheryl. Thank you very much. Good evening, council. Slowly, quietly, and methodically, piece by piece, bit by bit, a group that does not trust us, does not value us, and does not want us here, is buying up our businesses and our land. This is not about just real estate, it's about changing ownership, this is about control. A cult has been working behind the scenes, acquiring property, one lot at a time. They don't want to be part of this town, they don't... They don't want to be part of this town, they don't want to be neighbors, they want to push us out to isolate themselves and to create a world where only they exist. They're doing it in the most calculated way possible, through money, secrecy, and through slow, quiet displacement. Slowly, the heart of this town is being replaced with something unfamiliar, something controlled, and something dangerous. Why? Because they fear us, they fear the outside world, they fear anything that challenges their beliefs. And so instead of engaging with the town, instead of living among us, they have chosen to remove us through silent strategic takeover. This is not paranoia, it's reality, and the evidence is all around us. Just look at the property records, go look at the empty storefronts, look at the once-vibrant streets that now feel eerily quiet. I'm here to ask you not to sell the street to Scientology. I speak as a resident of Clearwater and the daughter of a Scientologist. It doesn't matter that they build pretty green spaces, they are quite lovely, but they're empty. Scientologists aren't allowed to enjoy those spaces, and us, the townfolk, we're not allowed to enjoy them either, they'll call the cops on us. So, I'm asking you, please, don't sell it to them, don't give our town away to the cult. And I say this as someone who's part of the group, and that's all I have to say, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Rachel.
Yeah, yeah, no, I see, no, I only need one. Okay. Oh, okay. Jessica?
She's here now.
Thank you, I'm so sorry.
It's okay, she got the kids, that's why. So, I, it looks like I have five minutes now, so...
You have four.
From the, from the...
You have four minutes, because you've got one person?
No, I've got two.
This person as well?
Yes.
Erica Escamilla?
Yes.
Okay, so you get four.
She's doing the Secret of My...
Shut up and talk.
Festival, so she's part of an event group. I'm, I'm here not only to represent myself, but to try to represent the community. I know I might not say things the most eloquently or the most politely, and I apologize for that, but I just, I wanted to be apparent of what we're speaking of. If, if it is on time to create, like Ryan Cotton just said, give us an opportunity to raise funds, because we will raise it. I've never let you guys down before, and if I say I'm behind something, I tend to do it. So if we're gonna, if it is about a monetary gain, that is an increased price. If it is about your constituents, like Meg Minio-Conti says, your constituents are here, they speak for us, they speak louder in voice in many that they don't want it. If the presence was true, and you want to represent constituents, and they wanted this, then the downtown would be full, and I'm here to tell you, the downtown's full, it's not. It is, it is full because, and if, and if people opposing it were so detrimental, then I would be out of business. Scientology, they're great people, I have customers, I have friends that are. Their population about 8,000, 500 of which might have monetary means to be able to go out and support the downtown. You're supporting a small, isolated group that cannot develop the downtown by itself. So I'm asking you guys, as people who represent your constituents, vote with your constituents that can fund the downtown. It is time for us to wake up from this illusion and to see things clearly as they are. Don't overcomplicate things, make things simple, and the simple answer tends to be the right answer. If the community wanted it, and people were for the downtown, the downtown would be packed. If it is about monetary gain, allow us to propose an offer to increase the coffers of the city. If it is about community, then this is about community then. I believe that we have to simplify the argument. Why give more things to a community or to a group that didn't clean their room? Think of it as a child, you're saying that we have this, they will fix, they will clean up the room if we give them more property. That never works, if you guys have had children. You tell them to clean up the room first before you make new deals. It's, we're overcomplicating a super-simple issue, and as you've seen, most of your constituents are against the selling of the streets. Most people, and again, simplify the thing, most people who've been in support of it, why are they in support of it? Nonprofit organizations that are, came up here and spoke, that they are heavily funded by this organization. Like, simplify it. Every single person you've had up here have been, received monetary gains from them. So I'm, I'm asking logically, is there a correlation? Well, there must be, right? So, I ask you guys now, and I say this as a witness of what's happening to my community, and I'll finish my, my little speech that I have, I ask you guys to be witnesses, in the biblical sense, in the righteous sense, in the community sense of our, of our Clearwater. I say this to all Clearwater citizens, Clearwater, it is time to wake up. They want to sell a public street downtown, it's not just land, it's not just pavement, it's a piece of our city that will be gone forever. And you say, when things are gone, we can't enforce it, because, Ryan, you are a libertarian like myself, private property, like John Locke said, is to be protected, but why would we give more away? Then constitutionally, we can't do anything. So, it's not just pavement. I say, I say this just, you guys tell me it's just business, it's just development, it's just a road minimizing its importance, clearly important to the community. It's, it's about access, it's about community. This is a street that I ride my bike every day to go to work to, and I'm sure you guys take the path as well, it's about community. It's about what, what and who gets to decide what Clearwater becomes. To every citizen, you don't have to be loud, you don't have to be political, you just have to care about your community. If you live here, this is not just me speaking, but I hope it becomes a movement. To every Scientology, I'm here to say, you're a part of our community, you're a part of our city, I'm not asking you to stop believing in what you believe in, I'm asking you to stand with something that's bigger, that is not just so singularly inclusive. To every, to every person in Clearwater, I want them to know that they belong, they're part of our community. This is not an attack against anyone, it's just, it's a plea for us to remember what Clearwater could be. It's not about control, it's about presence, and today, you see that people have shown up. So I ask you guys to sit, to stand, to speak with this, to be counted, because if we lose this piece of city in silence, we lose the rest of it the same way, like we have been losing it. You say this is a new policy, it's a new agenda, you guys won't be here when this project is finished. So what is the olive branch, if you're not there to receive it?
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
I turned in my card.
Your name?
Bob Holsinger. Good evening. Should the city of Clearwater sell part of Garden Street to Scientology? To me, the answer is quite simple, just say no. Once again, Scientology wants to take another piece of Clearwater, as if they don't have enough already, and bring it under their control. What do they want a street for? We know what we want a street for as citizens of Clearwater, it gives us a public thoroughfare, it gives us access, and if this public entity comes under the control of Scientology, it's no longer in the public domain. And once again, Clearwater becomes a less free and open city. So, to me, it's quite simple. Should the city sell part of Garden Street to Scientology? The answer is simple, just say no.
Ride on, dude, ride on, dude.
Next speaker.
It's not yet filled out, can I turn it in right after I say?
Sure.
Okay, good to see you all.
Thank you, Aaron.
I think everyone watching these proceedings is somewhat surprised to watch in real time, while the biggest cheerleader of this project in the council, Ryan Cotton, just found out tonight that Scientology's not even paying this $1.3 million for another six years. It's unbelievable. I have seen your email responses to some of the citizens that have emailed you that are concerned about this, and you are suspiciously in favor of this project, a project that no one in Clearwater wants. Scientologists are less than 2% of the population, there's about 1,500 SEER members, there's about 1,000 public Scientologists. In all of Tampa Bay, you couldn't scrape up 4,000 Scientologists, but you're running around like, building L. Ron Hubbard Hall is gonna save downtown Clearwater. Ryan, it doesn't make any sense what you are out there doing. Mayor Bruce Rector, thanks for voting no on this, Lena.
Yeah.
At one of the recent hearings, the mayor of Clearwater said, "He is still not even clear why Scientology wants this street." How can free councilmembers be voting yes, when the mayor isn't even clear why Scientology wants this street? And you've both, Lena and Bruce, you've both, you have both already made it clear, you already know they don't need the street. Not selling them this street does not prevent them from building LRH Hall.
Thank you, Lena.
It's got nothing to do with it. So why do they want it? I truly agree with Mark Bunker, they want it so that protesters can stand on the sidewalks in front of LRH Hall. Ryan, you talk about treating Scientologists like any other member of the community. Is there any other church in this community that has gone to war and tried to sabotage the development of downtown Clearwater? So whereas Scientologists should be treated with the same respect and the same rights as all other members of this community, the Church of Scientology is not just another member of this community. It is a toxic, dangerous, and destructive force, and everyone who spends any amount of time downtown understands this, but for some reason, you like their shiny video, it's truly incredible. You talk about the construction benefits of LRH Hall, that's a one-time benefit. Whatever, whatever economic trickle-down effect, you know, there is, that's a one-time benefit. You seem to be under the impression that building LRH Hall brings more Scientologists to Clearwater. Do you not understand the role of the flagland base in the greater world of Scientology? Every Scientologist who's gonna come to Clearwater already comes to Clearwater, believe me, LRH Hall changes absolutely nothing. Scientologists don't even use Scientology's properties that are so-called open to the public. The park where the checkers used to be, have any of you ever seen a single Scientologist in that park?
No.
I haven't. The gorgeous park next to the Fort Harrison Hotel, it's beautiful. Have you ever seen a single Scientologist in there? No. If the Scientologists won't even use these properties, what do you think the people of Clearwater are gonna do?
Thank you, sir.
Yep. Emotions aside, this is, this is serious business, folks.
Good evening, Mayor Rector and fellow councilmembers, thank you for being here tonight. I'm gonna speak to you in regards to the item 7.2, the vacation of the street to the city of the Church of Scientology. I'm strongly encourage you to please vote, rethink this before, please make sure to consider what you're doing before voting, considering voting yes on this. I'd encourage you to think about, and I'd encourage you tonight to vote no. That doesn't mean that you should never work with Scientology at all, I believe you should, but they need to become to the table first, and they need to offer a good, strong, you know, offer a good, strong, like, plan of what they're actually doing. I have yet to see that. As other members who've come up here, other members of the community have pointed out, they have yet to state what they're doing with this street, or why they need this street. They don't need this street to build the L. Ron Hubbard Hall, they could build it without it.
Good job.
I feel like this is just another giveaway to the Church of Scientology, already controls this town. I mean, if you look at, if you go back to the history of how they came in, they came in here under secret orders, 1975, they lied about who they were, actually, they said they were the United Churches of Florida, and they were not, and it was way to discover they were the Church of Scientology. They went really hard after the mayor at the time, his name was Gabe Cesares. Fortunately, they went after him, they came up, they were like fake hit-and-run, they orchestrated against him, it's a policy they have called fair game, they'll go after any critics that they deem as a threat to their policy. I don't see that as someone I'd really want to be associated with. Now, I'm not saying that Scientologists are bad people, many of them are great people.
I said, "Great job, dude."
But I'm talking about the organization itself, it's just not something that, it's just, I've just seen what it's done to this town, and not many people want to come down here, and I think that's because of, they own so much property and they don't really do much, or if they just leave all these buildings empty, and this is dead, a lot of it. And they build nice, I give them credit, they build nice buildings, but they're not open to the public or anybody else, and I would really strongly encourage you, I would like to thank Mayor Rector and Lena Texiera for not voting for this, I would consider you, all the other councilmembers as well, to reconsider this change, and go back and think about this. Think about what it's gonna do, think about what could we help to build the community. They mentioned back there, someone, they mentioned right before, a few people before, that there should be an African-American, like, memorial or something, like a park for the public, and I feel like that would be a great thing, and site...
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Clearwater, bright and beautiful Bay to church, because the beaches are never something they talk about when they visit, it's always the church. Church of Scientology, where does one begin? Imagine myself being under the age of 16, riding my bicycle in downtown Clearwater, taking a break on the sidewalk across the street from the church, when all of a sudden the church starts taking pictures of me. They start talking about me on the radio, they start describing me down to the exact color of my shoes.
Five, Adrian.
They try to get me to go across the street to their security office, so they can continue to take pictures of me and my friends. The security guy identifies himself as a Clearwater police officer. This is my childhood trauma of dealing with the Church of Scientology. I was less than 15 years old at the time, this happened in the mid-'90s, what's happened since then? Nothing. Take the mega-powers or the superpowers building as an example, how long did that project take to build? It was just a hole in the floor, or hole in the, in the downtown area for how long, before you guys finally pushed their buttons and developed that? I'm sure that was a popular transient hangout back in the day. But let's go ahead and fast-forward to the circa 2020s, I took a friend over to Emily's recently, within the last five years, sat down, ate breakfast, and I said, "Hey, let's go take that walk." Guess what? Less than three times going around that building, there they are on the roof again, there they are on the radio again, identifying me, every article of clothing I'm wearing. I said to my friend, "Let's get out of here, I'm not dealing with that anymore." What part of this is normal? I can walk around any other building, non-Scientology-owned in the city, with maybe the exception of the police department, and not worried about getting threatened or harassed or anything like that, because it doesn't have anything to do with them. Why is that? I might not ever get the answers, might not ever get the apology that I am looking for, but as a child growing up in this area, that was my issue with the Church of Scientology.
Thank you, sir.
This is for 7.2. I'll be quick here, because I'm gonna give you, give you five minutes later on. My name is Mike Mastrosario. I just found out tonight two different things that I didn't, I wasn't aware of. One, that we weren't getting any money until who-knows-when, at least five years or so, and then I found out about a new proposal that was just new on the table, where you can get money sooner than that. And I want to stand here and I will donate $30,000 to that project, if you'll give them the time to raise the money and to look at the thing properly. So you need to really look at and say, "Do we want to wait five years for this money, or do we want to listen?" You know, I hear that we say things like, "We represent all our constituents." You've got a roomful of constituents here, and you've got 100,000 constituents out there. And if you were to put this to referendum, they wouldn't want that, because you know darn well it would have went down.
Right.
But we will not talk about that, because it's not. But we do is, we want to say, please make the right decisions, this is about the sale of it, this is 7.2, I'll be back up about the vacation. But I will say this, I want to thank the council before us, Bill Johnson was here, Floyd Hamilton was here, Mark Bunker was here, Lena Toshada, Dave Albritton, and the mayors and councilmen for years in the past, who stood tall and fought against this. I want to thank you for that, but I also want to make sure that your legacy to go forward has to be thought about. So please, again, what you could do for the black community, what you could do for the city of Clearwater, it's a win-win situation, and if it's money, we can raise that money. So I just want you to hear that, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Good job, dude, good job.
Good afternoon, my name's Jonathan Wade, 1312 North Madison Avenue, Colorado, Florida, lifelong resident of the city, and a community activist and a... Lifelong resident of the city, and a community activist, and I own a not-for-profit called The Spirit to Change in North Greenwood. About 35 years ago, I was president of the North Greenwood Association, and I was introduced to Ms. Pat Harney, who is a Scientologist, and I guess one of the spokespeople for the church. She has been working in the, in the community of North Greenwood since that time. She has personally helped me to help my organization, so I don't come tonight in support of Scientology. I don't come as a critic of Scientology. I come as a citizen who believe in fairness and equality for all citizens, including those I don't like, or people don't like. I think it's unfair to, to, to just constantly beat and badger an organization because of their faith. I'm not, I'm not okay with that as a, as a Christian myself. I don't espouse to Scientology. I am a Christian, I'm a pastor, I love the Lord, but I love fairness, and I love justice, and I love equality. So I'm here tonight in support of the decision, if you choose to abate the street, that they can build their property and do what it is that they wish. And if you do have a desire to do a black museum, we sure would like to have it back over in North Greenwood, or on the heights to advocate, or to reopen the Martin Luther King Center, and have something for real that we can open and utilize for support. I live the community. I live the black experience. And I've lived racism and hatred, and I don't think that it's nice, no matter who it's happening to. That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. So I own the business for 40 years.
Ma'am, could you say your name?
Oh. My name is Deolinda Grasso. I own Deolinda's Bridle for 40 years. I've been watching this town fighting the Scientologists, fighting, they find, they're not getting anything accomplished. So I've been working with them. I never had a problem with them. They don't own me, I'm Catholic, and there's Jesus in my store everywhere. So I just feel they should, you know, be treated like everybody else. I never, I never had a problem with them as business. They come in, they pay for whatever they want, and that's it. But as far as the deal you guys got from them, I don't like it. And I think I watched the building being stopped for 15 years across the street from my shop.
That's it.
So you have to treat it as a business. So whatever, if they want to buy it, they have to buy it. Treat them like everybody else. But I would, I would, I do feel you should treat them, and Clearwater should know, the Scientology's been here for 40 years, and you guys have been firing them, and they own Clearwater now.
Ma'am, yeah.
And I've been watching, everybody buying.
Yeah. Please, please talk to the council for us. Thank you.
You know? So that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you for coming.
Facts, lady, facts.
Next speaker.
Oh, thank you, Antix.
Steve Harris.
I too, my wife and I will also contribute to your initiative.
When you put it together. I was distressed to find you all during that discussion of what happens if you get to the end.
Christine, did you all, did you all already speak on this agenda?
I waited my turn again. Would anyone, does anyone feel like I'm displacing their?
Sir, sir.
No, he's already spoken.
Sir. 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 Would, sir.
Sir, you only get one.
There's another agenda. It has nothing to do with this issue.
Let me ask you one question then.
So, so please, I'm asking you.
I need a.
You look like, you look like, you look like a gentleman and a professional man.
I need a civic lesson in that, when some, when, when the board indicates, says something to the public that is wrong, flat ass, wrong.
Sir.
It's not on the record.
I'm asking you not to be disrespectful of all these other people here. Some of them are here on the floor at issue, and you're wasting their time.
I would call out you, while in not knowing about what you were talking about.
Please, please leave if you can, if you can't be, okay? You're here with, you're here with other folks who are part of, who agree with you.
How do I collect the record?
Please, please help them.
How do I collect the record?
Please help them. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is George, and I'm here to support the church's desire to expand and allocation by purchasing these surplus properties. And I'm not a Scientologist, rather, I'm sort of a guest friend of them. Consequently, I have a more neutral view rather than emotional, negative, or positive view.
Hey, hey, Paula.
So my reasons for supporting the church is, in buying this property, is there are many benefits, mostly economic, and some of them are during the construction phase. There'll be construction worker hire, it'll be a fancy building, so it'll take a few years, it'll keep individuals busy. Once it's completed, there'll be a hall where a house up to 4,000 individuals, and it's my understanding that events will be held at throughout the year. Consequently, many individuals from out of state in the country will come there and stay locally in the hotels, and take advantage of the local sceneries and so forth. Consequently, there are economics benefits varying directly. In addition to that, it will add to the community opportunity to hold events there, is my understanding. So it isn't just, oh, it's going to be an empty building, or it's for Scientologists only, but as I understand it, other individuals in the community can participate in hold events there. And that's all I have to say. I want to make a brief.
Thank you, sir. Yeah. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. My name is Kim. I wrote the council members last week, and Mayor, thank you for this evening. Thank, it can't be easy, what you're doing. I also, of course, want to address the section of Garden Avenue. Most comments tonight have been of a very practical nature. You know, traffic and the history of what's been going on in Clearwater, people have spoken with much more knowledge in the history of what's going on than I even have, so I really appreciate that, and I've learned a lot. I have perhaps a little bit more of a philosophical twist to all of this. I just want to throw it in for the whole debate and discussion. When you do a little research on what Scientology is, which, of course, I'm sure you have, and obviously everybody else has, you would, and of course, to do that for a potential buyer in any business venture, you'll get a variety of answers, most of them which roughly state, Scientology is a set of life rules and practices, and/or it's a business, and/or it's a cult. Enter the elephant in the room. I believe that is the elephant in the room. Usually, the explanations involve all three of those things. Regardless of your own faith, if you believe in God, if you don't believe in God, wherever you stand in your faith, I think that we could all agree that there's a long-established, accepted, and universal understanding of the meaning of the word "cult." And this isn't from me. You look up Scientology, Google it, and all these things come up. So this isn't just me coming up with this. Cults are never seen as a positive influence. Quite the contrary. I think if we were honest, if anybody's family member in the room, say your child, came up to you and said they were thinking of joining a cult, any cult, that you would likely, most likely, encourage them with all of your heart not to join, not to be a part of it. Why? Why is that? That then would beg the question, if it's not good for your child or your family member, why would we choose to voluntarily support its increased presence in our city? This elephant, from my perspective, is pretty big, and I wanted to bring it up again, because it's been alluded to once, but I wanted to just say it clearly. My hope is that you would consider that in this whole discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah. Next speaker.
Great topic. Thanks for bringing up the elephant in the room, lady.
Thank you, council members, for your time tonight. I appreciate it. My name's Michelle. I've lived in Pinellas County most of my life. I've owned property in Clearwater for over 20 years. This is my home, and I care deeply about what happens here. A hard fact that I say out loud is, I don't take any friends or family that come to visit to downtown Clearwater. I take them to Dunedin, to St. Pete, to Safety Harbor, to Tampa, but not to my own downtown. And that's not because I don't love this city. It's because the downtown has become a ghost town, run by Scientologists. It has nothing to draw on visitors, just more Scientologists. Over the years, I've watched as more and more businesses have left, more buildings have gone dark. We all know what's happening. The Church of Scientology, excuse me, has quietly taken over much of downtown, and the result has not been growth or revitalization. It's been emptiness. Now we're hearing that the city may sell yet another piece of property, but this sale doesn't reflect community need. It reflects the wants of a powerful organization that already controls too much of our city center. We deserve better. We deserve a vibrant welcoming downtown, somewhere to bring visitors. We deserve to be heard. So I ask you, pause and listen. Listen to what the majority of the people have said tonight. We want a downtown that we can go to. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker.
Hi, I'm Blaine Underly. You guys are good with math. What's the statistics of these people that are for and against? Anybody got it? Good idea? You represent these people. Now, the Church of Scientology, with this property, you're good with math. Someone had said you're going to lose $30,000 a year, and you're not going to get any money for six years. $30,000 a year for parking, you're not going to get that no more. You know, as soon as they sign off the deal, the fence is going around this entire property. They're closing that street. You're not going through it. You know it? I know it? We all know it. Now, the Church of Scientology has never personally treated me bad. I ain't one of those people that use their parks almost every day. I'm the only one, and I love it. I'm the only one. I love this town. About five years ago, I got so upset with Scientology because they weren't participating in anything. Hear that, David? You weren't participating in anything. He's not coming down here. But I realize that in my retirement, I love this place being a ghost town. My electric bike can go everywhere, anywhere, and there's nobody. And I love it. Truly, I love it.
Slight sarcasm there.
I love it. You understand? I really, really, really love it. So the more they take over, the more I love it. Now, Poirier, my concern about this is, I want to know your opinion. I know their opinion. You make more money than all of them, not including them. What is your opinion? What is your future of this town? You're not there to be puppets to them. We hired you to be the boss. We hired you to be Trump. We hired you to be the leader. We hired you with the gonads. We love you. So please, give us your vision, give us your opinion. Is this a good deal, in your opinion, and why? You gave an opinion of saying, "Hey, I worked with every one of these, and we understand. You're good at it." Excellent. But is this good for Clearwater? I don't care. I love it being a ghost town. I love my electric bike going everywhere. And I watch the videos every day.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name's Joe. When was the last time you heard somebody say, "Let's go to downtown Clearwater"? I've lived here since '94. I've never heard that once. This place is a ghost town. Went here a couple months ago. It's completely empty streets. I don't know how you guys make any revenue. It just doesn't make any sense through taxes. The deal, it's, I don't know, I just read it, it just really sounds stupid, but you do also hear, "Let's go to Tampa, let's go to St. Pete, let's go to Largo." I mean, there's every single place around here, but there's, you know, you can go to all the downtown areas. There's nothing here besides the beach, and that's really the only thing. It'd be really great if you guys had places for the actual local community to organize and meet with each other, and, you know, businesses. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mr. Mayor, City Councilmembers, I'm Bud Elias. I'm a resident of Countryside, a community long known as having a large disconnect between what happens in downtown Clearwater and Countryside. So over the past several weeks, I've made an effort to talk to a number of people in Countryside, as well as people I know in other communities within, within Clearwater, ask them about what they know about the proposition of the city selling the property to Church of Clearwater. And the unanimous response was, "I don't know anything about it." Further, many of those to whom I spoke asked about the informational meetings that the city used to hold when it came to educating our residents about such things as the renovation of the downtown Coachman Park and the covered 4,000-seat amphitheater. So the vote scheduled for tonight is not the usual procedural question. It is, rather, a question that will have significant impact on Clearwater's landscape. So does it not make sense to take the question in an internet, an educational forum to the residents of Countryside, Greenwood, Morningside, Island Estates, Greenbrier, Clearwater Beach, Sand Key, and others? Is it not a good time to begin the process of bringing the residents of our neighborhoods into the sunlight of what's going on in downtown Clearwater? I would suggest tabling tonight's vote, begin the process of including our residents in important community issues. We can't be afraid to hear what our residents have to say about living in Clearwater. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
John, I think they gave you enough minutes. I'll cover your turn.
Hold on one second, sorry. I don't have anyone on the back of a card.
That's all right. I'll get it done in three minutes. What's up, everybody? Why would you sell a public road to a child-trafficking cult? Also, this lady named Erica, for 15 months, has been protesting with a sign by the pizza place for 15 months, and one day, Castellanos and Third Reich, I mean Officer Reich, conspired and caged a peaceful woman for free speech. Ah, free speech, that's the reason we came here in the first place, right? It stinks to high heaven, or of a payoff, or retaliation from Scientology. You all voted to get rid of, rid the city of free speech, and it just seems like the shit ran downhill to the PD. How can a peaceful woman be abducted by gunmen from the Clearwater Police Department, and none of you care? The reason Scientology wants the road is so they can suppress speech of protesters. The same First Amendment that gives Scientology the right to practice their cultish beliefs are the same First Amendment rights that allow protesters. And if you sell them this street, they're going to make it private and kick everybody else off. I heard that Poirier's affiliated with Scientology. Is that true? Any truth to that? Make that face. You could have shaved one point. It's well documented. Do you not know that? You're selling yourselves out like whores for a million dollars you could have easily shaved off somewhere else. Wake the fuck up!
Thank you, sir. Next speaker. Ma'am, are you next? Yeah? Yeah, thank you.
Okay. I promise not to yell. My name's Becca K. I have lived in Clearwater since nineteen seventy. My grandparents moved here in nineteen forty-six, so it's, I've seen a lot of changes in Clearwater, a whole lot, and we used to go downtown to shop and go to the movies and go to Moss Brothers, and it was lovely, and I've seen all the changes. I need to preface this by saying, I live in a neighborhood, most of my neighbors are members of Scientology, and they are lovely people. They are very, very nice people. The organization itself, I know a lot more about than I wish I did. In nineteen seventy-five, when they bought the Fort Harrison, about a year later, there was a concert, and it had some jazz musicians, and we were going to go to the concert. We'd bought tickets, and we didn't, we're not aware of this. We went inside, and we were going to look around the Fort Harrison, because we've always been able to do that, just walk around, go around the pool, you know? Who was it? Van Morrison hung out at the pool there. The Rolling Stones wrote one of their songs out there by the Fort Harrison way back in the day. So, we were told immediately at the door, we could not come in. We would have to wait till the concert started. And then, this happened again in a building that Scientology owned. My daughter was going to do a recital for a dance, a dance studio she was in, and shh, my son just said, I'm not coming for the recital. I just want to come in and say hi to my mom for a minute, and they told him he could not come in. So, there is a limit to what you can do, where you can go. Like, one person said a little while ago, what building you can go into, which Scientology owns, where you can just walk in. None. None, I don't think so. And this will be no difference. The LRH Hall, they're not going to have events here that you can walk in, and that the one guy said, you know, oh, I'd like to have an event hall. That's not what this is. And I appreciate those of you who voted no. I'm not going to say anything to those who are... Mr. Paul Breit. Some of y'all lived here a long time. I can't believe you would have voted for yes. I don't think you should sell a public street. We need our public streets. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah. Next speaker. For those of you like me, getting older and need to take a break, we are going to take a break here in just a minute. Trying to get through all the speakers first, though.
Well, hello, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Mayor and council. I thank you for taking the time to hear everybody today. I think that's really remarkable, both because a lot of councils don't take this much time and really listen and value and weigh out what your community is saying. I was born and raised in St. Petersburg in Seminole, and I live in Dunedin, and I spent so much time in the Clearwater area growing up, and it was so, it was so vital, and it was thriving, and there was so much to do, and there was such a good feeling, a good emotion in the air, and going down Fort Harrison, and going down to Fort Harrison at night, driving along, it's just, it's just not been the same. It has not been the same for years. And I think that what you do is you have a bully in the ring, and the bully says, I've got a lot of money, and here you go, boys and girls. I can really, we can take up this city, we can revitalize it, we can do, make this city great again, but no, that's not what they did. They privatized everything. Anyone can be a nonprofit organization. Anybody can be a church. You can go online and get the tax benefits from being a church. I understand that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I understand that about seventy-five percent of their holdings are not taxable, and I do understand that seeing the layers of the map of our beautiful city and seeing building by building overtaken and growing, and growing like a cancer, growing like a mold, it's growing beyond what anyone's capability of doing anything about is, and I don't want you to be intimidated by somebody like that. I'm not talking about who they are, what they represent. I won't go there, but I do want to tell you that any one of us could not come in, take a piece of land, and say, hi, I'm Susan from the city, and I want to know if I can buy this for one point three million dollars, and I can pay you six to ten years from now, and I'm going to go ahead and start getting my permits, and I'm going to go ahead and build my building, and you're going to say, yes, and it's going to be so beautiful, and I haven't given you a dime? Where's the revenue? Where is the input to this city? Let's make this city great again. It can be great again. Let's give other entrepreneurs the potential to be able to weigh in on this and not, and not feed a dragon. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah. Sir. Sir. Sir, I...
No. With all due respect, you've allowed at least two other people to speak on this topic.
I've given you all this time to warning. Please leave. If not, I'm going to have to have you escorted out.
It's shocking to all of us that so many of you had not read the contract.
We're going to recess for ten minutes. Thank you.
Okay. They're going to recess for a few minutes, you guys, while they kick that poor guy out. Let me... I really super apologize to anybody that I missed that has come in that I haven't said hello to. Lori, 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 DE sixty-eight A. Gina, did I say hello to you? Oh, my goodness. YRB! Oh, you have surgery on the tenth, and we've missed you so much, YRB. Right? I know I wrote a little spiel that I'm really hoping that somebody from our team... DT, they are, he is not talking on topic, and he keeps coming up to talk, and he's not talking, talking on the agenda item. So, that's why they are not letting him speak. Lori, Lori, Peter put the link for John Philex in there. Thank you for that, Peter and a Phila. I really appreciate that. Yeah, he was a... Hey, Scooter. The Clearwater crew all left. Why did they leave? Do they think they're not... Well, they're on break. Yeah, well, I figured they probably said what they're going to say, and hey, Melody, I did see you sneak in, and I didn't say hi. Hello. Hey, Sandy McQ. I will, it'll resume on its own after the recess. Yeah. He's, well, he's trying to get them to say Wise Mama says that, that they voted without reading the contract. They all needed old, old person tinkle break. Ah, well, I'm glad that they spoke. There's been a couple of people, but it's kind of, I don't know. We haven't been able to see the line. Maybe Scooter can answer that if she saw Erica in there to speak. You were watching on the Clearwater Council site and so frustrated you can't comment. Oh, I know. Well, we did put out instructions on how to do it in writing. I know antics. I told you, I have a football bladder. I get a two-minute warning. Hmm. Well, maybe Erica will still be there to speak. Hey, Phoenix, but girl, I didn't see you sneak in. Chat was flying by so pa, fast. Prostate problems. YRB, I don't think you have prostate problems. I don't know how many protesters there are, Adrian. It's a, it's a large population, so I'm sure... Oh, okay. Yeah, I, I sent my comments in through the e-comment. You're welcome, Sandy. I know, I'm kind of interested, too. I mean, why leave when, when you want to hear the vote? I know. Did they turn the comments off on their YouTube? Erica was charged with disrupting an investigation, impeding an investigation. I know, right, Marie? When you got to go, you got to go, just like, hurt, sorry, I'll be right back. Eight point one, so this is whether they're going to sell, and eight point one is whether or not they're going to authorize the vacation. You're right, Dylan. Unfortunately, we probably would have had wet cleanup in aisle nine for all of them. Yeah, that's, that, it would have, I guess they would have to have a moderator in there. Yep, they're voting tonight. I know. And honestly, Peter looked it up, and I started looking into it myself, and what, the way they're doing it, and what they're doing is against the ordinance. Night, JoJo. Sweet dreams, darlin'. Sweet dreams. Oh, so they went out to the hallway, and then they wouldn't... Oh, those sneaky little commies. She did not break the law. I don't know. I don't know if she's, I don't think so. I think they let her out the next morning. YRB, it was funny. She said she had roommates. Instead of people in the cells with her, it was funny. I know, those new billboards are the bomb, aren't they? Well, thank you, Scooter, Mom. I appreciate it. Usually, we have Haggis in here, too, but she, she went out on us. I know, if you're going to sit and listen to everybody do comments all this time and then not get to hear the vote, that sucks big time. Right? Well, they, I guess they submitted the proposal today. Oh, thank you, Kathy. Yeah, YRB, if you, there's been so much going on. It's been kind of crazy. I know. I wish I could go out for Vietnamese food. Adrian, I don't know... Oh, hi, Style. Okay, thank you. I cried on your video today, Style. I did. You had me boo-hooing. They, they do have to vote publicly. That's what they're going to be doing tonight. And then, the second reading for the right-of-way vacation. So, there's this one, and then they probably made it to where people couldn't come back in, so that way, they couldn't talk on eight point one, too. That's just bullshit. Oops, excuse my potty mouth. That's BS. Because how can they talk on more items on the agenda unless they don't get to talk about, unless they're not having comment on eight point one? Maybe they're not, because it shocked me they didn't have public comment in a public meeting. I got an itchy back. Yeah, that was, that was my suggestion. What does that mean, Mona? Well, so, this is seven point two, and then, when they go to the hearings for this, for the, the reading of the second, the second reading of the proposal for the vacation. I don't know, hippie chick. I didn't know they could have it without doing public comment, so Florida's weird. A long break, right? Eight point one, I, here, let me look at the... Oops, hold on. Yeah, I don't know where me, where he went. Apparently, somebody, Scooter was saying, they went outside, and the guard wouldn't let him back in. Okay, so, seven point two is this one. Eight point one is to adopt the ordinance. It's the second reading to vacate the city right away. So, maybe Wise Mama can tell us. Still, I didn't even know there was going to... So, this one is to declare as a surplus and approve the sale of the city of Clearwater. And then, this one is to adopt an ordinance to vacate the city right away. So, this is to sell the street, and this is to vacate the right away. Am I correct, Wise Mama?
Well, no, not really. A street vacation just turns over the ownership of the easements. Well, thanks, Adrian. So, that's the, that's the two different things. So, why, I'm not too sure. I don't know why they wouldn't have comment on eight point one.
seven point two is this one. Eight point one is to adopt the ordinance. It's the second reading to vacate the city right away. So, maybe Wise Mama can tell us. Still, I didn't even know there was gonna, so this one is to declare as a surplus and approve the sale of the city of Clearwater. And then this one is to adopt an ordinance to vacate the city right away. So this is to sell the street and this is to vacate the right away. Am I correct, Wise Mama? Well, no, not really. A street vacation just turns over the ownership of the easements. Well, thanks, Adrian. So that's the, that's the two different things. So, why? I'm not too sure. I don't know why they wouldn't have comment on eight point one. I don't know. I don't know, Mandy. I wasn't watching it, so I don't know where he went. John Felix is your new boyfriend? Your new parasocial? Bo? Erica was detained and moved to another location out of her own free will. She was kidnapped. Yeah, I don't, Wise Mama, they're, they're weird. Totally weird. No, uh-uh. Audit, no, this is the strangest public procedure I think I've ever seen. Oh, thank you for that, Sally. I know, right? Why, we miss YRB. Yeah, no, they had public comment at the work session the other day. I, I don't know. I just, I, I can just sit here and go, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, because Florida's frickin' weird, man. There we go. Okay, let me get it back, let me unmute it.
This time we'll call back to order the... This time we'll call back to order the meeting of the Clearwater City Council. And we're ready for our next speaker on this agenda.
Hi, my name is Brayden. Um, I was not expecting to be here at eight thirty, but since I am, I would like to say that I personally do not, as a pretty regular kid, care what Scientology is. I think a lot of Clearwater does not care what Scientology is. But unfortunately, since moving here, I've been quite aware of what Scientology is and just walking through the downtown, you are just... It's, it's put on you, the buildings, the propaganda, the people. I moved here about seven years ago and at first, all my friends were super excited for me. They were saying they're gonna come and visit me in Florida, um, for some Florida sun. Then I moved to Clearwater, Florida, and, um, unfortunately, here, we have beautiful beaches, expensive hotels, and nothing within walking distance for us to enjoy. So I have many friends here. They'll come to Florida, but they go to Cocoa Beach, they go to Miami, they even go to Orlando because there's nothing to do here. I believe that giving a road to a religion that many people have been hurt by and even more disturbed by or confused by is not improving the city. Um, Clearwater has a reputation of being weird. Um, many of my friends out of states, I have friends all over the country, they think of Clearwater, they think of Tom Cruise and Scientology, and that's not a reason for them to come unless they're stalkers. So most people do not come to visit, which, you know, is just, it's silly, but it's also frustrating. I have to go visit them. I believe the road that is being discussed faces the main road towards Clearwater Beach. And I do not believe that the city council should vote to deter more people from downtown Clearwater. Which is what would happen if Scientology builds an objectively strange and creepy monument to their own religion. The current plan for the church involves statues of some sort memorial to their own religion, which is not inclusive to the public at large. It's creepy and boring and honestly, just something that I don't wanna have to drive by every time I go to the beach. I don't think when you look on Google Maps at downtown Clearwater, Clearwater Beach, I don't think people want to see that. I believe that a memorial to a historic figure to remember an important man would draw people to downtown Clearwater, or at the very least, a public park would not make me embarrassed to invite my friends to downtown Clearwater. I hope you improve Clearwater. Thank you.
Good job.
Next speaker.
Good job.
Doing well, thank you.
You said it was creepy too, Gina.
Good evening, everybody, and I'm, my name's Bill Sturtevant. I never dreamed I would be last, so I'll try to make this, not brief, but I really wanna make some points. The, just quickly, um, I went to Clearwater High School, year nineteen. And, um, went out of state to college, went to Atlanta for forty years, came back to Clearwater in two thousand on a, on a project on the beach and decided to stay, moved back to Clearwater in two thousand oh three. What I found was an incredible, great little city. Friendly? I had probably more friends here than I had in Atlanta, because I get older and we get so big and everything. Um, one day I was approached by a friend, a high school friend I hadn't seen in years. And he said, "Bill, I hear you're kinda getting involved with some downtown Clearwater stuff." I said, "Yes, I am." He said, "I hate downtown Clearwater." It resonated. It really did. There's no room for the word hate in downtown Clearwater in the same sense. The church, in my opinion, from what I read historically, when they came here fifty years ago, their goal is to make downtown their campus. It's been printed. And as we look at the way, where we are today, fifty years later, it's looking like it. I'll come back to that in just a minute. Every time we change councils, uh, I understand that maybe the mayor or a council member, uh, maybe the city manager, maybe the city attorney, they meet with the leadership of the church. And we've heard it, I've heard it for twenty-five years. Our, our membership is gonna fill up all these storefronts. It's gonna be wonderful, but we have to take it slow. Hear it all the time. Why would we take anything slow if you got people that wanna come down and do business? Well, we did get a Starbucks. And now I hear we're gonna get a bank. A Woolworth, is it a drugstore? Uh, it's gonna have a nice facade. And then another building, the telephone building, maybe some offices. Folks, that will not move the needle at all. We need people living in downtown Clearwater, who work in downtown Clearwater. Not impossible. However, we don't have any land. Years ago, the Clearwater Marine Aquarium put some property up for sale. We all know about it. Church offered an amazing price, about one-third. Oh, no, and they ended up selling it to the city of Clearwater for about one-third of what, what the church was willing to pay. You say, "Holy cow."
Mr. Sturtevant.
Why did they do that?
Thank you, Bill, appreciate it.
Is that three minutes already?
Time's up, yeah.
It is?
It just went off, it did. Thank you, yeah. Thank you. Our next speaker, please, yeah.
Hi, my name is Jim MacArthur. I'm with Realty Management Group, RMG. I'm a real estate investor. I'm a developer, property manager. So, I'm not here to talk about who did what thirty years ago or any of that stuff. I think downtown Clearwater needs some revitalizing. And to talk about thirty thousand dollars in revenue on one street, that doesn't really move the needle when somebody's gonna come in and spend several hundred million dollars uh, in development. And then there's a trickle-down effect because the roofers, the electricians, everybody under the sun is gonna get a piece of that, plus guys come in from out of town. Being in the property management business, I see it all the time. Downtown St. Pete is where our office is. So there's cranes all over downtown St. Pete. There's not one crane in the sky in Clearwater. You guys need new buildings and you need new businesses. And one block of Cleveland or whatever street you want isn't gonna make a difference. You need new buildings, you need things to attract people, and you need economic growth. And that's what, what happens in places like St. Pete was the same deal. Downtown was dead. Scientology's in St. Petersburg downtown, doesn't have anything to do with it. I think, uh, I think it's a great idea. And the reality is, I looked into it a little bit deeper. The reason why they need this street is because there's gonna be open space and there's gonna be a park. Right? Outside of the building, so it gives them the extra space to do it. And then the way that they're closing the transaction, the city doesn't transfer title on it until the building's built. So you guys structured that transaction. And being a developer for forty-five years, I've known the same stuff. We do deals like that all the time. It's very, very common in commercial real estate. So you guys don't transfer title on the street until there's a certificate of occupancy means they've gotta build the building. And they're not gonna do that. Uh, they're gonna build the building and you're not gonna give them title and they won't have title, so the thing is, there's really no issue there. Right? I say it's a great idea because you need something going on down here. Right? And we're looking at putting a business, small business incubator in downtown, right? Because you don't just need buildings, you need businesses, and the businesses here aren't supported. Right? The last meeting I was at, they didn't even know the biggest turf manufacturer and installer in the world is literally a couple blocks away on the street that everybody's talking about. You need more businesses like that, billion-dollar companies, not just a Starbucks. And there's lots of ways to do it. Scientology doesn't control downtown. I'm a real estate investor. Guys can come in and buy property two streets over. You know what? There's a lot of places. Go to New Orleans, downtown, five streets wide.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, sir. Please, please, come on. Hey, next speaker, please? Anyone else wanna speak on this agenda?
Thank you, my name's Sam Lamson, and I've learned a lot by being here. This is my first... Sam Lamson.
Your name, sir?
Sam Lamson.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is my first, uh, board meeting, I should call it. Very interesting. I've learned a great deal. I'm gonna read my little speech, although it may not be totally accurate now after what I've heard, but we'll see. So, don't shoot me if I'm wrong here. I've lived in, lived in Clearwater for over sixty years. I've owned a number of businesses here, so forth and so on. I've seen a lot of changes. This one will be interesting. I wanna start off by saying I'm not siding with the city of Clearwater or the Church of Scientology. I'm here to state what I perceive to be the facts and who I believe will benefit from the sale of the property slash street, then the building of the hall. From now on, I'll refer to Clearwater as the city and Scientology as the church. The church, or the city sells to the church a street for about one point three million dollars. The cost to build the hall will be around three hundred million dollars. Construction may take a number of years. There will be many people being employed by contractors. Some of these employees may be from out of town and will need lodging, food, and other essentials. When these workers have time off, they may wanna go out on the town and enjoy the many places Clearwater has to offer. Who benefits? Clearwater's local businesses. Once the hall is completed, which evidently will be a number of years down the road, the hall can seat around three thousand six hundred people without tables and can serve about fifteen hundred for food events requiring tables. From what I have researched, the church slash hall will host only nonprofit organizations and other churches of different religions. You may ask how much the church will charge these nonprofit organizations and other churches to use the hall. The answer is nothing. What about an event that requires tables, food, uh, tables and food? The church will supply all the food, table settings, and whatever else that may be needed for a memorable event. All at no cost. This is important to the city. If a nonprofit organization or church puts on a large event, there could be up to three thousand six hundred people attending. Many, many may be from out of town and may stay over for a night, a weekend, or longer. They will need lodging, food, and probably do some fun touristy things. The city of Clearwater and the local businesses will again benefit. Taxes. Some think the hall will be tax-free. Not so. The church pays around three point four million dollars a year uh, now, and with the hall, that number will be much more. That is a lot of money, year after year. So who wins? The city of Clearwater or the Church of Scientology? In my opinion, both for obviously different reasons. The church wins as it can continue to assist the many humanitarian projects and other religious groups that it supports. The city of Clearwater wins as it took a...
Thank you, sir, ma'am. Thank you, sir.
The most important part was that.
Anybody give me another minute? Does anyone else want to speak on this agenda?
Eyes on the state. For decades now, we've watched as Scientology has slowly and deliberately taken over our city's core. Often through secretive purchases and front groups hollowing out what should be a thriving downtown. Businesses have closed, public spaces have disappeared, and the life of this city has been drained away. And now, instead of stopping this trend, instead of standing up for the people of this city, or the city is giving away even more public land. A public street. Once that land is gone, it's gone forever. Do you honestly believe the sale will benefit the residents in any way? That it will build back any of the businesses? That it will restore the downtown to what it should be? No, it's not gonna do that. The truth is, every time you give in, every time you hand over more of the city, you make it harder for the city to recover. The sale is not about growth, it's not about progress, it's about control. A single organization with a long history of operating in secrecy and shutting out the public is being handed even more power in the heart of the city. It's a betrayal, it's a slap in the face to every resident who wants a downtown that they can actually use, visit, and enjoy. And let's be honest, if this deal were truly in the best interest of the public, why has so much of it happened behind closed doors? Why is there always a lack of transparency when it comes to these decisions? The people of Clearwater deserve answers. More than that, they deserve a city that prioritizes prioritizes its residents over a private organization that has already taken far too much. Do the right thing. Just don't do the easy thing. Don't sell it.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else wanna speak on this agenda? If not, we're ready for council discussion.
Yeah, I mean, I'll start off. I've got, obviously, some things to say. Um, you know, we've been dealing with this since I think that Scientology put in for vacation in December. And that's when this whole conversation started between city staff and the elected officials you see here today, and that's where we all decided to, hey, go allow city staff to go and bring back a negotiation. As I said even at the work session, this started with Scientology wanting three properties, not three properties. And we, through negotiations, said, "Listen, let's start somewhere with one," right? As I've alluded to, I'm born and raised here, second generation. I went to Calvary Baptist Church downtown when it was here and Calvary Christian High School. I have walked during my senior year during Bible class to minister to Scientologists. I, I mean, we all share experiences if you're born and raised around here, and my experiences are a little bit different. I was never chased off or detained, if you will, right? Me and a group of high schoolers that were out there trying to spread the gospel message to Scientologists usually had great conversations with them. And then forty-five minutes later, we would go back into the school and go to our next period. So I think something needs to change, and we all say that because we've heard it up here from countless people that this is a ghost town. We've had papers in the windows for how long? If you go walk Cleveland Street now through these active negotiations, you can see that there's permits in windows now. Paper is down, things are actively happening. I think that's a good progress to where we're trying to get because I genuinely believe that we can be better than St. Petersburg, that we will be the destination that people want to come to. We already have world-class beaches. Why can't we have a world-class downtown to suit it? I, I think that we can. You know, I appreciate the city attorney, um, going over the specifics of the deals to show the taxpayers are protected with what was negotiated. I, I mean, I was surprised that Scientology signed the deal, if I'm being honest, right? Because of the three hundred thousand dollars that they're going to be charged year over year um, by not getting the building completed at a certain date. And then after, uh, the terms are met, past nine years, uh, we could take the property back if we so choose or, or see what's going on with that, uh, timeframe. I think something else that we need to remember is, uh, I think something else that we need to remember is, with a certificate of occupancy, title doesn't change over. So we've heard some people up here state that, that we're going to make this decision tonight, and then all of a sudden the fences are going up, you can't use Garden, nothing's going to be accessed. I mean, that can't be further from the truth because no building is done. And if no building is done, no certificate of occupancy has been given, no title has been transferred. So Cleveland Street will still be there, your parking spots will still be there, you'll still be able to utilize these things. And I think that, again, I have to commend city staff for the negotiation that they put forward in trying to take five different people's variation of what we're trying to build here. That's got to be mind-boggling to try and get done. So I still commend the city manager, the city attorney, for bringing the deal that we have. And I do believe that with that contract and the assurances that we've been given verbally, right? I know how people feel about that. I've read 50 emails, I think, that I have saved in the Garden Avenue folder. I get it. But I think that these binding words are starting to show fruit. Again, you walk Cleveland now versus two months earlier, the paper's starting to come down, the permits are in, work is being done. The caveat to that is, is seeing non-institutional use with long-term leases for commercial businesses, restaurants, storefronts, those types of things, so that we can see an active downtown. And I truly believe that this is just one step in going forward with that. So I have nothing else to add right now.
Let's remember, Menino, I think you're next.
Throwing me in the queue?
No, no, well, if somebody else wants to.
Thank you, sir. Nominate me. I think it's procedurally probably in our best interest to acknowledge Brooks and his presentation. So before I go on about this agenda item, do we, does anybody disagree with me with that? Okay. I, first of all, I appreciate your positive delivery in coming up. I appreciate your timeframe and how quick. I was with you last night till about 8:30 PM, and I had no thoughts that you would have any ability in that short amount of time to submit a proposal like that. So congratulations to you and your team. I also want to sincerely acknowledge your passion for our Greenwood community and protecting the legacy of Mac Dixon and putting a park in memory. I think that's very important. You obviously drummed up some support in here tonight financially. You have my support with that. I am, I'll roll my sleeves up and help you. I served on the MLK Neighborhood Coalition for a number of years. I'm very passionate about all of our communities, but especially our MLK community. With your proposal, though, I just don't think that Garden is the best fit for it. I think I agree with Reverend Wade's proposal, that that's probably more fitting for the Greenwood community and for our MLK, maybe the Neighborhood Coalition Center. It's been needing some sort of reviving to it. That community has been begging for it for years. I think your idea, your passion, some of the financial support that you've gotten from this group tonight, I think is awesome, and I thank you for that passion. I'd love to help you and make sure. I just don't think Garden Street is the right fit for it. I think the MLK Greenwood community is a better fit for it. So thank you for that, for that proposal and all the work you did. Do you want to stay on that?
You have a second?
Well, if I'm going to talk about Garden, but did you want to just talk about the proposal and jump in in front of me?
I just need to...
Yeah, go ahead.
I just need to clarify. So the deadline for proposal admissions is ended today? Ended today?
I don't hear you.
It doesn't work very well. The proposal for the submission deadline, it was today?
It is.
And we cannot extend it, correct? Or is that true?
I don't know. I don't know. Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't say that. I mean, I do believe that the council has the discretion to extend it. You could not shorten it. But I do believe that if it was the will of the council, you could extend it. Just to kind of give general context for this, the procedural aspects of the notice and advertising are somewhat different in this transaction than they are in a lot of other transactions the city has. And the reason for that primarily is because it's downtown. Downtown, it's governed by the Community Redevelopment Act, which is a state law that governs disposition of city-owned or CRA-owned real estate within the CRA. And so that makes it different than, say, property you might dispose of anywhere outside the CRA. Under the Community Redevelopment Act, there are specific advertising requirements that are minimum advertising requirements, but they do not prevent the city or the council from extending a deadline. So the 30-day advertising requirement, which is statutory, is a floor, but the council does, if it so chooses, have the power to extend that deadline. But it has been advertised for 30 days, which is the standard under Florida law. I do believe council could extend it if you so choose.
So what's, some of the comments that have resonated with me, and sometimes I didn't have the answer to, is how, how important this issue is, right? And so those who come up to me, they say, this is such in a rush, I wasn't aware, 30 days is not enough. If I didn't hear it from my neighbor, I wouldn't have known. And this is not, they perceive it as insignificant. And so I'm wondering if there's an appetite from us to extend this timeframe because they've had to come up with this in, what is it, a week, two weeks? Whereas the other person, the Church of Scientology, had how many months to prepare it? I just, it resonates with me, this whole idea of...
Right, D.
That there's not enough time. People didn't know about it, and they want a fair chance to bid on it. And in terms of, you know, what we're going to do with that street, I don't approve of what the church is going to do with that street. So are we going to... It's tough, you know? We're going to say, oh, this is not the right place for this, for this proposal. So I don't know. I'm wondering, is there an appetite from this council to extend the period and give this group or other groups more time, since this is a polarizing issue? This is a downtown street? So that's my question.
I know there'll be comments both sides, and you'll agree to that, but it really does slow us down if we've got to wait for applause. So appreciate your enthusiasm for whichever side you're on, but please, help us, okay? So discussion on what?
Okay. I think we all up here understand that this memorial garden is a good thing. I just don't think it's the right fit for this memorial garden. I think that, just reading through the purpose and vision and what you're requesting of the city of Clearwater with no real clear answers on how maintenance is going to be done, and really, you hadn't even started doing any kind of fundraising to finish the park, and you're not expecting really to pay for the street, you're expecting Clearwater to give you the street. You know, I think there's a better fit with the North Greenwood CRA. North Greenwood CRA could probably help fund this and help maintain it, as Reverend Wade was saying. There's plenty of places that they've been talking for years about having revitalized up there. But next to a busy street, I just can't, you know, Court Street, how many, how many cars do we have there? I mean, it's a very active street, and to have a children's park next to it doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Especially if you're going to chain it off and then as far as this, you know, as far as the drawing, and I know it's not to scale, but I'm looking at this going, I don't know how you're even going to get that with the amount of land, when you still want to see South Garden at one way there with parking, you're not going to have much left by the time you hit the other side of the street. It's going to be like a 20-foot swath of park. And we have, we have so many better places. The Martin Luther King, the over, the whole area up there has multiple places that they... We've been asked to take the land, and we haven't done it because it, just taking the land without any cost, the maintenance on it is what really is the cost. And if we do, to me, if we do a partnership and you can cover the maintenance on it, we can help get the land to put this park in, and I think it would make a lot better... To me, it would be better suited in another location, not this location.
Yeah, we're in council discussions.
Yeah, so I would, I would agree. I think that this is a great idea, especially, you know, with some of the points that were mentioned, you know, with the African-American graves and all the things that were alluded to, the families, the seven families that were pointed out here to honor them as well. I do agree it's a great idea for a park, but I also agree with Reverend Wade, you know, why are we not doing this in, in the Greenwood area? You know, that it seems like it's the optimal place to put it for that community and to strengthen it and embolden it, right? Along those lines, Councilmember Auburn brings up a great point. You have the CRA that can assist in helping with that and maintaining it and taking care of its longevity, instead of trying to just add it again to the Parks and Rec portion of our budget that's taking up so much already in a time where this council is trying to look at ways to cut costs from our budget. I just don't think adding another park like that is, it's going to be tough, it really is. I mean, we're trying to be cost-conscious, and I think the CRA would be probably a really good fit for it, not to mention the neighborhood, as I said. So I agree with that to definitely look at this proposal and look at a different location for it, because I think it is a great idea.
Okay, well, I'll weigh in. Yes, I would vote to postpone it. If promotions were made to postpone it, because, and then I've got prepared marks when we get to final vote, but I go back to what I've said before. They don't, they don't have to have this street closed to build the auditorium that they've been talking about for years. They don't even really, so we're not really approving that. And if they designed it the right way, they wouldn't even, it would be like a Level One application just to get the permits to build it. They would not even need community development board review, I don't think, to even build an auditorium. Now, the size, whatever they want to build, that's a different story. But this is a, this is a voluntary transaction. They offered to, they wanted the street closed, and we, that was shared with the city manager, all of us, and we said that we would be willing to consider that. We never agreed to do it. We agreed to consider it. But each of us had five different things we wanted in return for that, and I'll talk about that later. But this went on for a period of months, and I think the assumption was among some of us that I didn't know at the time there would be other community members interested in doing something like the proposal we've just gotten tonight. And to Councilmember Tishida's point, really, this was only like last agenda for a council. It's only been advertised for just 30 days as of today. I don't, a lot of folks were surprised when it came up on our agenda last time. So I think it's a public street. I talked at the work session on Monday about I use the street, a lot of people use it. The citizens of Clearwater, whether you live in downtown or you work in downtown or you live in countryside, it's the city citizen's street. And so I think if we are going to convey it, we can't just pick and choose who we're going to convey it to just because they own the property on the east side and west side without a fair opportunity for anyone else in the community or outside the community that wants to purchase the street or has a different proposal for it. So I'm sympathetic to the proposal tonight because granted, it's been pointed out, the depictions are not the best, and they've admitted that. But they haven't had much time to really think about what proposal, because they didn't know the street was available. They didn't know that we were talking about doing this tonight. So I would, again, I'm chair of the meeting, so I can't make motion in a second, but I would vote to support postponing it to give others, including this group, a chance to make a proposal, because I think it ought to be open to the entire community to do something with that street.
Well, I'll make a motion to extend the timeframe 60 days out, to give equal and fair chance for them to write a good proposal or someone else.
I have a question on that. So you're extending the time to accept proposals for 60 days? If we're starting to get many proposals, I think that we ought to have time to be able to digest what they are before we start bringing them up on the dais and, you know what I mean? This, this one...
I got this two hours before we came here.
Yeah, like an hour and a half ago, I read, I started reading this. But I'd like to have a little more time to look through it.
Yes, I guess they are.
So we need, the motion's been made before we go into further discussion, I need a If there's no second, then the motion dies for like a second. So we're back, we're back to discussing the agenda item that is proposed.
Okay, I would make a motion to extend it 30 days so we have time to look at it, and then we can schedule it into a council meeting shortly after that where we can decide on it.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we extend consideration...
Oh, wait, he wants to talk.
We postpone consideration of this agenda item for 30 days to allow more proposals.
I do, right, I do think it'll be important for the clerk to know exactly what the direction is. So I think the first question is, is the motion to postpone consideration of the item that's currently before you for 30 days? And if so, during that 30-day period, is the intent to open it up to other proposers or is it primarily to digest the existing proposal that has come in? Because if, if it is the latter, and if the intention is to open it up to further proposals, then the question is whether a council wants to extend advertising. If the advertising said April 3rd is the deadline. And so while the council could certainly make a motion tonight to extend the deadline, and I see no procedural problem with that, if you're going to go that direction, you may want to consider re-advertising, because you're, you're not necessarily going to accomplish that objective unless you, unless you actually re-advertise. You know what I'm saying? Because you don't, I don't think you have to. But if you extend it but don't re-advertise, you're probably not going to, you're going to just repeat the same thing 30 days from now, which is that people are going to say they didn't know anything about it, so.
So I'd like to amend my motion. I want to amend it...
She seconded, so is there...
Because, because this proposal came in on time. We just haven't had a chance to really digest it yet. So I'm, I'm saying for this proposal, 30 days, we can discuss it, staff can take a look at it, maybe give us the, CRA can look at it, maybe we can get something, some feedback on this before we go to make a decision on it. So I'm not open to any other proposals now because today's the date. But this one here, I would make a motion to extend 30 days so we can digest this one.
So it's the item on, so it's the item on the agenda will be continued or postponed for 30 days?
Yes.
Okay. So we're not extending the...
No.
Okay.
Is there a discussion for this?
Is amendment okay?
So no extension is just for us to, for us to process this? Or will they have a chance to have a conversation and improve or...
Yeah, yeah. No, it's for this.
So just this, nobody else gets a chance?
So I think, let me confirm with the attorney, the motion should be to continue the item before council for 30 days.
I would agree that would be the form of the motion.
All right, second.
Okay, now we can discuss.
Now, there's council discussion. So I'll go ahead and say, so listen, this is something that...
They need Roberts.
This is one of the reasons I got in government. And here we just did it when I brought up the fluoride issue that we're finally coming to later on in the evening. And 37-year-old who's got a good career, great life, and it's just frustrating to see government kick the can down. And that's exactly what we're doing here again, right? They got the proposal in on time, absolutely. We've had a very good authority within the neighborhood that we all know Reverend Wade pointed out that this isn't the right place for this proposal, that it should be in another neighborhood, to which a lot of us agreed on. And here we are making a motion to just digest this proposal for Garden Street. It just doesn't make sense to me. And it's, and it's definitely a little frustrating, and I will say this, in my mind, it's showing bad faith. Here, we came, we sent city staff out to do a job, they came back with a good, in my opinion, a good contract, and we see things that are... things that are, are happening with downtown Cleveland Street, and, and now, in my opinion, I said it when I was running in all of the different forums, we see that there's roadblocks thrown up by Scientology and roadblocks thrown up by the city. I see this as a roadblock that the city's throwing up. So, I just don't, you want stagnation in the city, this is the way to do it, and this is how it's gonna continue. And I am not here for stagnation, I am here for progress and working. It is now known to me, you know, Tracy McManus, everybody is familiar with Tracy McManus, asked me when I was running, "Did you know that Scientology or the parishioners owned 200 properties?" No, I didn't, I did not. But when I had a meeting with the city manager and sat across from David Miscavige, he did tell me, "We own 200 properties, the Scientology or parishioners." And guess what? When we had this meeting, all those papers were still up in the windows. Everything was, was happening, or that was happening is still happening. After the meeting and seeing that we were gonna allow staff to progress and try and make a deal, you started seeing things start to happen.
No shit.
So, listen, I understand frustration, but for somebody who is a second-generation native, that hasn't, that's lived here more than 10 years, that's lived here more than 15 years, it's been a ghost town for a long time, guys. So, I'm just trying to say that this is government at its finest and kicking the can down the road. So, it's, it's very frustrating from my aspect to see just government doing that once again.
Yep.
So, please, let, let folks up here speak. Councilmember Manera?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I agree with you. I don't, it, to me, we could give two years to this proposal, and it can be an absolutely amazing park, and cherish a legacy and remember so many amazing faces and souls from our African-American and Greenwood community, which we all love so much, but it, Garden Street is not the answer. So, to, to me, we can fight for this for as long as extra time is needed and build a, a better proposal. It's only five pages. If we could not have read it in the two hours we were given before, the five pages with a coloring book on the back, then I don't know what we're doing.
I agree.
May I, may I, please? I, I think this is another example of, of government kicking the can down the road. I think it was afraid to make a decision. Nothing's gonna change in the 30 days that you take to reevaluate a proposal that the majority of us just sat here and said, "This is not the right fit for it." So, we're, we're just pushing the stagnation down the road. The very reason that we're all emotional and upset and frustrated is the stagnation in our downtown. And here we are again, just prolonging it. What may seem like immense differences of opinions, I, I think we're all in this room truly connected and rooted in sincere compatibility, the desires, and the desires to have a united Clearwater, the desires to have a developed and active downtown for all the citizens of Clearwater, a desire to protect our downtown. And I firmly feel that this deal that the city negotiated puts our citizens and our city in, in a better place for the future, and, and you don't have to agree with me, and I, and you're, you're totally entitled to that, that's your opinion. I, I personally, some are gonna say this is a long exhausting night, and they're over it, and how do you guys deal with that? This is refreshing to me. This is what government is about. Our community has begging for 30 or 40 years to be a part of these decisions, to come along with these, to stop doing backdoor discussions, to stop hiding behind a veil of secrecy, and come out into the public, and this is what we're doing, and we're finally there. This is, we, we are. There's no debating that we're not having these discussions in the open. You're seeing debate, uncomfortable debate, in a very challenging situation in our community, that everybody up here is uncomfortable having, and those before us were uncomfortable, and before them, were uncomfortable too. But nothing is gonna change in our community if we keep doing the same thing. Doing nothing gets us the same results that we're all complaining about. Do you give up, do you give up on your downtown? I, I don't think 30 days does nothing. Do you give up on your downtown? I, I don't, I don't think...
Would you let the gentleman speak? You, you, he'll talk to you after the meeting.
I know, it's amazing that the first speech group is the one that doesn't let anybody speak.
He'll have a conversation with you anytime, I don't have any issue. But please, please let, he listened to all of you, please let him speak.
Very ironic. I, I don't only listen, I take, take notes on every single one of you. I try to get your, your names and what your thoughts are and what your points were. I, I listen to you, because I care, and I care about our community, and I care that we're finally in this place of dialogue and in the sunshine, having these conversations. And whatever happens with this decision, if it gets kicked down the road because we're weak and we don't want to make decisions today, and we just want to take time and see if something miraculous happens, nothing miraculous is gonna happen until we take action in this community, right? Nothing is gonna happen until we do something different. And it's, it's unfortunate that we're, we're in this, this same place. I think this was a good opportunity for the citizens of Clearwater, for a brighter future for Clearwater. I think the ball is in, would have been in the church's court. The ball's in their court to say, "Come out in the sunshine, come show your presentation, show us timelines, show us plans, talk to our citizens about what you want." This was your opportunity to have that, and it still is 30 days down the road, but this is a new council with new ideas and a new, what some have called backbone, that finally wants to bring these two parties together and have conversations. But if you don't want to have them, and we just want to stay stuck and binded by emotions and fear and frustrations, we'll get, we'll get the same results. But I can promise you, I'm gonna keep fighting for Clearwater. Tony, you and your family and all your downtown merchants, I'm gonna keep fighting for y'all, and I, I just hope that we can find a way to, to move Clearwater forward.
Someone, I guess you have a comment.
I need to address some of the comments that I've heard repeatedly, and, you know, I always try to ignore it two times, but when it's said three, three times, I always feel like I need to answer. I don't think of this as kicking the, the can down the road. I'm responding to the citizens feeling that they were blindsided. That's what I'm responding to. I don't feel it's weak. I don't think, I've been called many things, but weak is not one of them. I was not born in the United States, let alone in Clearwater, but I did choose this city, and I think that I have dedicated over a decade to this city. So, let's not talk about, you know, who's, who's got more in the game, and who's stronger and who's weaker. Let's just focus on, on, on the, on the issues. The issue is, I feel, from what I'm hearing from the citizens, they feel blindsided, they feel rushed. The first time that this was discussed was on St. Patrick's Day in spring break, on a Monday, which was, you know, not our regular scheduled meeting. So, it's not kicking the can down the road. It is just giving the citizens a chance to respond, and I want to do that respectfully. In terms of wanting to do, you know, we all care about downtown. I'm, let's not do this, you know, contest. It's just that I come from a perspective that I've been down this road before. So, this is actually doing the same thing over and over again. We have vacated land over and over and over again, and we've never received the activation that was promised. So, I am deeply saddened that we have once again missed this opportunity as a city to negotiate a beneficial deal, in my mind, to walk away with a written activation agreement. That's what we all want. We want activation. And in terms of seeing progress with the building of the buildings, the Church of Scientology has proven over and over again that they can build beautiful buildings. It's what goes in it that makes it successful or not. If it is private, even though they're the highest-paying taxpayer, we would have received more if it was an entity that actually sold goods and services. So, it's not just building pretty buildings and the paper's going down, it's what goes in it. And we already have turnkey properties that are ready to be rented, and there's no response when anyone calls to rent them. So, an activation agreement, to me, is imperative. That's what our downtown needs. And I use the word "our" because it is both of ours. They're there, we're here, it's for everyone. We have repeatedly vacated land with hopes and verbal promises that activation would occur, would occur in return, and is yet to occur. We will be privatizing a public road in the very downtown we're trying to revitalize, without considering the negative impact to the downtown of the future, forever chasing this carrot. We have written agreements with every other entity, why would this be different? This vacation request will further exacerbate the imbalance in our downtown, and I will not be in support of it. And as a matter of fact, I want to go on record and ask to be put on the agenda for exactly a year from now, in the work session, to reexamine what activation has occurred, what long-term leases have been signed.
Okay. We're discussing the motion to amend, by the way, so just, we'll have a chance to say whatever we're gonna say about, but right now, that's just, we're talking about the motion to postpone, excuse me.
Right. And I don't want to be misconstrued here, because I don't think that this is the best fit for the Memorial Garden, but I think that I at least feel that we need to give it an opportunity for a good look-see here. We may end up supporting it, but it may end up being somewhere else. I like the idea. That's why I'm extending 30, I'm asking for 30 days to look at this. If we decide in 30 days, it's a great idea, but we can't afford it here where, where it is, we may find another spot for it. I'm just trying to get a window of opportunity to try to keep this alive, maybe go to the CRA and see what they can do, the North Greenwood CRA. I'm not in the same camp as my fellow council member, Lena, because I think that the best, really the best thing to happen is, we need to, we need to give the first step in trying to do something different by making, making our town vibrant. You know, I've said this story many times before, I was born here, I've been here 74 years. When I was 12-years-old, I would, as a kid, ride my bike downtown, it was very vibrant. It was better than any other city around, because there were, things happened. We had three movie theaters, everything downtown. Well, it wasn't Scientology that ran everybody out, it was expansionism in the 70s. They happened to come in after everything was gone and started to buy up property. Now, people see that as, oh, they're trying to take, take over. I know that they want a vibrant downtown as much as I want a vibrant downtown, and I know that they have made investment of millions of dollars in studies to do much more than the city could ever imagine doing right now. And I want to give that a chance, to see if that can actually work. Now, many of my constituents oppose the city's collaboration with the church, even if it means sacrificing efforts to create a vibrant downtown. I understand that. I've got friends and family that are vehemently opposed to this, and I think we all do, because it's hard up here. I was elected for representing the best interests of our city, and not the individual wants and needs of each individual person, but what is best for the city. And I really think, you know, it's been over 50 years, look what we got. You're all complaining about it, we have nothing. And, but you know what? I can tell you this, now, listen, you say, "Okay, the, the church owns all these buildings downtown, and it's a ghost town." Well, you know what? They own the buildings, but you go to ClearSky, you love it. You go to the pizza, downtown pizza, you love it. You go to Tequila's, that 400 block is filled all the time, even on, even on weekdays. So, they can be owners of buildings, but what they've done is they've bought up these properties for assemblage. And you, as a developer, would know this, you can't develop anything if you have small parcels, you've gotta assemble them first to be able to make an opportune for a developer, and that's the reason they have done this. People think they're taking it over because they're, they want their, their footprint to be all of Clearwater. That's not true. They haven't done anything with these buildings down there, extended leases, because they have plans to redo these buildings that are terrible buildings, by the way. I was a retired contractor, been in all of them, and they're, they need to be torn down, most of them, because they're old. They're, I mean, they're really old, they need to be, and they're spending, on three buildings, they're spending millions and millions to rebuild those.
Our bunkers run.
They probably should have just knocked them down, and they could have done a lot more with the money they're putting into it, but they're gonna put restaurants and retail in there. I think that, I believe in their plan, I want to give it a chance. So, that's why, that's where I'm coming from right now. But I also think I like this Mac Dixon Memorial Garden. I think that they got it in on time, today's the deadline. I think we need to have a little more time to look at this, and I'll, I was gonna give it 30 days, because it's gonna affect the project for Scientology. In 30 days, if we look at it and we find that it's not the best fit, then we can go ahead and do the second reading and vote on, you know, on the property sale to Scientology, and it'll continue on. They're, you know, they're not getting this road until their building is completed. We're not doing the sale until their building's completed. So, you'll still be able to use the road like you really want to use it, and you'll be able to park there, which you never do, because I know you don't, but it's not something that's gonna happen right away. So, that's, that's the reason I'm making this motion, 30 days to extend it for this one, the second proposal that came in, to give them a chance for us to actually assess it better than an hour and a half, okay?
I haven't had a chance to go first, so would you like?
I just figured you'd like to go last, so that's fine.
Well, I haven't had a chance to say anything.
Oh, I understand, sir.
So, I want to give folks, you know, wagon full, and all you really need right at this point is a shovel full, so I'm gonna stick to just this motion. I'm gonna support it and vote for it, because the word's been used that we have negotiated this. We haven't negotiated this. We, we, we have communicated to the city manager, we would be willing to consider closing the street. Each of the five of us had things that we wanted in exchange for closing the street. We had different concerns, but this was not a negotiation. This was maybe five negotiations, but it was not one negotiation. And even if it was, the way we landed with our owning the street, it's only been with one party. It's not been like we would have if we were bidding this out, or any, anything else we would do, soliciting bids, proposals, and then selecting the proposal, and then negotiating with the proposal that we selected. We haven't done that here. We've been talking without, outside the public's knowledge with one party. And I think it's fair, now that we know we have someone else in the community with a proposal, I think it's fair that we give them adequate time to refine their proposal, to talk to us about their proposal, because they have had, I mean, they offered to, or they expressed a desire to close the street almost a year. And so, we've had all this time to talk about, "Well, what would you give us, and what, what would your proposal be?" This group that came in tonight has not had, they haven't even had 30 days to even pull together what their thoughts would be to do something different with the street. It's a public street. We need to let the public submit proposals to it if we're gonna close it. Again, they, they don't have to close the street or ask the street to be closed. Their members use it for the flag building. Most, I think that's most of the parking use along there is their members. They could build the auditorium, beautiful auditorium.
Oh, no.
Not they have now. But if they want to close the street, that's a commitment we need to make the public, to let the public make proposals. And we have just not, the public didn't even know about this until it came on our agenda, for them to be to put proposals together. The other thing I would say is this, is there's nothing to prevent Scientology from revising its proposal too, in response to what they've seen tonight, to see some other proposal too, to maybe make it better, arguably more valuable to the citizens of Clearwater. So, I think the 30 days is fair to our citizens, our community, and to anyone else who might have a different proposal, other than what's been presented to us. Because what this, the talks have only been with one party. Because what this, the talks have only been with one party, not with anybody in the community whole. And it's only been noticed for 30 days as of today. So that's the reason I will vote for postpone.
So, council, to clarify in terms of what the impact will be for the continuation. So 30 days is actually Saturday, May 3rd, so the next council meeting would actually be May 15th, so I just want to make sure everybody understood that.
May 15th?
May 15th would be the next schedule.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Councilmember Alberdin, I don't know if we've all agreed to this proposal being great, but in the wrong place. Why extending this motion to review it bears any credibility? Because we can take this wonderful proposal and the acknowledgements that it's getting to staff right now and start working with them and take it to the CRA without a 30-day extension to the agenda item that is here now? So that's that. And Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, I feel like you're being a little disingenuous. We did not put this street out for bid. You are 1,000% correct. Scientology asked us to vacate it. That's what started this process. And that's when the city manager came to us and said, what are your thoughts on vacating Garden? To which we said, get your team, go talk. They brought together a sales contract and did the best they could between her five bosses to negotiate a deal. If that's not, if a sales contract and the other things that were followed within this aren't a negotiation, then you're going to have to give me the definition of a negotiation. So I, I don't think that it's fair, because we weren't looking to sell Garden to anybody. This was Scientology reaching out to us to vacate it. And, and you know what? To Councilmember Menino's point, like, this is healthy. I can't remember if ever this much debate in the sunshine has been talked about with Scientology. So if that doesn't show you that we are open and transparent to give you the most information that we legitimately have in trying to negotiate a clearly contentious avenue while trying to build on our downtown and make it better, I don't know what else you need to see. Because everything's in the agenda item. We're openly discussing it. Countless times I've asked for the city attorney to go over the taxpayer-protected sales contract that we have. I'm, I'm, again, just, I'm glad that I'm here to sit in this seat and not be limited to the three minutes because this is the exact reason why I ran for government. The frustration that I felt as a regular citizen that finally put me where I needed to be and worked my tail off to get where I'm at now, because this is government at its finest in just kicking it down the road for something that clearly wasn't in the very beginning of this. This was a requested vacation which started a process. This was not a RFP. This was not, we don't like this street anymore, we want to erase it, and what businesses can come fill it? This is apples and oranges. So I'm sure I'm probably hurting a lot of feelings, but it needs to be said. It can't just stay not said. And for, from December, from December we've known about this. So I don't know what we're doing here. I really don't.
Thanks.
Are you done?
No, I was just going to, I've said enough already and I think we're going to talk about it again. I think with all due respect, it was a negotiation. There's no question that it wasn't a negotiation. The CEO of the city is the city manager and she was in God knows how many negotiating meetings where she took every one of your assurances and conditions that we all wanted and put them all on one massive list and sat in front of the church and said, we want all of these. And they said, well, maybe yes, no, maybe no, and compiled that list to what they felt in the negotiations was a deal for them. And some of us got assurances and conditions that made us comfortable enough to say yes in a vote and some of us, some of us didn't get those assurances we wanted. And that, that, that's okay. That's how negotiations work, but I don't think it's fair to distance yourself so much from a negotiated deal that they asked if we could vacate it. All of us unanimously said yes, but. They, they asked if we could have appraisals. All of us said yes, but. Am I, am I okay? Oh, I thought you had something to say. All, all of us said yes, but. And then it was the level of assurance and that's the only place we differed. So I, I think, I don't know, it's frustrating. I think you guys got an out. I think it was an easy out to take and I, I get it, you are entitled that. I'm not, nobody was saying anything weak or strong or picking on anybody. You're entitled to your opinion. You have just as much of a, a vote as the next person and I, and I respect all of you for that. I just, I, I feel that we have to fully respect the process, be open and transparent with it, especially if we're going to continue to be open and transparent with it. And I look forward to one year seeing, hopefully where we're at and hopefully every time we get an opportunity on this dais, let's not do a North Beach update, but let's hold the church accountable and say, what's next and what's the timeline and what are you working on and how are you helping the citizenry of, of Clearwater?
Yeah.
Really call it, partner.
So are we ready to vote on the motion? So motion's been up to the mayor?
Just would want clarification in terms of what the steps are if, to clarify if we are negotiating or not, because that was the direction that I thought I received by all five of council. And so just to clarify, is that what I'm going to continue to do? Are we going to do something different with that? Just so that I'm, I am clear on the direction from staff standpoint.
I, I, I don't recall a meeting where we voted to give you authority to negotiate. I don't recall that happening. So when we're using the word negotiate, I want to make sure that that's, that we're using it the same way, we're saying the same thing. We did, private, want each of us separately, not in an open meeting, but we did give you direction that we would be willing to consider it. I think all five did, according to what you shared with us.
Yes.
To talk with them about doing it. We've relied on the staff to tell us the process and city attorney about now. City attorney's the one who raised, hey, this is a street we own. It's got to be more than just closing the street. But you've been going back and forth to talk. So we're, we, now we've got a different proposal.
Hi, Gina.
If, if they want to revise their proposal, that's fine. It's up to them to communicate what it is that they would be willing to do. That's all they've done to this point. We haven't reached an agreement. We haven't selected them. They, they have, and the folks who came tonight, they've got just as much right to make a proposal like they have. And so that's all you're doing, is communicating, what is your proposal? And they have made that proposal. They put it in the form of an agreement now, but that's all we're doing. We've never voted or even until the last meeting addressed this as a body to give you direction to do anything or any authority to do anything. We've had, we've had private meetings, but not spoken as a body to do that. And you can't share with me or the other four what each one of us said outside the sunshine. So I, look, we're, we're just trying to move this along in a way that's fair to, the folks who've come tonight, the citizens have expressed, they just want a fair opportunity for alternative proposals to be considered.
Sure.
And that's what we're talking about here. Because we have not committed, we've not voted safe. We are only going to talk with this one group about purchasing the street. We have not done that. We've not considered that in a public meeting and we have to, in order to give you any authority to negotiate with anyone. We've not done that.
So just direction in terms of how I'm going forward, because that's, that's definitely not the direction that I was given individually. The direction I was given individually by all five of you and the word negotiate was provided. And so that's why I just want to make sure, let's check the temperature now and see what it is that I'm supposed to be doing.
Good. So I'm not quite sure if there's nuances to the word negotiate that I'm, that I'm missing. My understanding was she represents all five of us, we convey everything to her, and then she consolidates and gets the best deal. I got the short end of the stick, but that's okay. That's how the way it works. But I guess I'm misinterpreting the word negotiate. For me, she was negotiating, but not in an open forum, but she was having one-on-ones with us and getting everybody's requests and then consolidating it and negotiating. So is it, what is it about the word negotiate that, that I'm, that I, you and I are not getting together?
I've been negotiating things for 34 years.
Right.
And never would I negotiate the way we have. I mean, you just do not get good results for your client when you're doing it the way we're doing it. She's essentially been negotiating for five individual members, taking each one of her five preferences and discussing with them. This is what they would like to see in a proposal. But, but we've not even had an agreement drafted and put into the record until the draft of the agreement, until here, I guess that was this meeting, this, this meeting agenda work session gave up the actual agreement. So we had, we've had nothing to look at, the five of us all together, to see what even the proposal is to this point.
The people haven't...
And, and what I'm saying, using the RFP, I was, I was not saying this should have been an RFP bidding proposal. That's not what I was saying. I'm saying that I understand what folks are saying here tonight because they have not had a chance to present maybe a different proposal for purchasing the street than what's been presented to us. Because they didn't know about it until recently. And to that extent, Scientology had a benefit of being able to talk with us through what we would want in exchange for those in the street where others did not. And that's why I think it's fair to give them another 30 days. This, this proposal gave them...
Oh, I, I'm not questioning the 30 days. I'm questioning what my role is from the body.
Okay.
Please.
Mayor, man?
I, I think it's a shame and disrespectful that we're sitting here questioning your role in the city. You are the CEO of the city. That is your job. That is your title. That is your duty. That's what you get paid to do. We have a city manager form of government. We don't have a strong mayor form of government where anybody else other than you has the ability to negotiate. We don't sit in our individual meetings with anybody in the community, with the church, with the Girl Scouts of America, or with the Hyatt and negotiate. We don't have that ability. That's not our job and it's not our, in our charter. So I would be careful a, as a body and as a council to, to erode the, the confidence and the form of government that we have because the voters spoke loudly in the last referendum. They had the opportunity to speak to it and their, their voices were heard in an election and said, we don't want a strong mayor form of government. We want a city manager form of government. So your direction from me is to continue to negotiate on the best behalf of the city and at the direction of your five bosses as a council. And I think you do a great job and I appreciate the hard work you put into it.
Appreciate it.
As much as I appreciate, as a council member many times, she doesn't have a vote. The five of us make the decisions. The five of us, not, she's not the CEO in that respect. She does not have decision-making authority to sell property.
Nobody said she had decision-making.
The five of us do. That's, that's a council manager form of government. Instead of in the mayor's position, an elected person, we have five elected people that collectively make decisions like we're making. And she did her job in this case, was communicating to us. Again, I'm not saying there's anything you did that was wrong. I'm saying it's hard. I said this at the prior meeting. Hard to take five of us and negotiate five, try to find some middle ground. That was very hard, herding cats in some respects to try and communicate. That's all you're doing. You're trying to communicate with them what the five of us wanted so that they could make a proposal, which they did, that would get at least three of us to support it.
I understand what happened. I'm asking what the direction of the body is going from here with this motion and whatever the vote might be.
We're going to, we're going to, we're going to see, we, I guess we would want you to talk with this other group too.
So to simplify this, I look at this extension as giving this organization 30 days to improve on their proposal because they were done under duress. And, you know, one of the things that I, that I hear repeatedly is, what do you mean a city's, a city street's up for sale? Who knew? So the reason why we didn't get a lot of proposals is just the concept, the very concept of a public road in a downtown up for sale is something that many people can't imagine. So this group probably did it in a week. And so I'm not asking actually specifically for you to negotiate or anything, just to give that group an, an extension to improve on their, on their proposal. Because according to them, they themselves have said that they were rushed and they did not provide the best of their ability. It's as simple as that. I'm not asking you to negotiate with, going back to the church or anything. It's just a response to what I feel is, is a fair request. And that is for them to, you know, to give me a, a proposal that they would, they would give me if they had, if they weren't under duress. That's all. But you are definitely the, the person who represents all five in this form of government. And, and, and you know, when I went to see David Miscavige, I insisted that you're there with me because I, I alone should not be there because I want you to be able to know what's going on. Right? So did I clarify that at least for myself or no? Or did I just muddy the waters even more?
You know, we would come back in three days. I mean, if, if we feel like there's an alternative proposal, then I guess we would, this is already an agenda item, we would, we would vote against a proposal that's out there and out from Scientology. And, and we, the council would tell you that we're interested in this other proposal and we would go from there. But I think we want more time, I mean, the motion is to, to take more time to consider what these folks are offering as an alternative.
And on May 15th, do you guys vote it up or down? And, or we continue with, you know, it depends what's brought to us. You know, I was blindsided by this an hour and a half, well, now four hours ago. I haven't seen this before, so, you know, but as far as the city attorney says, they got it in on time, right? They got it in today. So I'm, my 30, my 30-day extension is for this, to get more information on this and then maybe we have that as an agenda item, we talk about it, vote it up or down, go to the next one. Because that's what we're extending, what is it? What are we doing, 8.2?
The, the motion is to extend this actual item, so the item will come back as written unless direction is given otherwise to staff.
Oh, 7.2. Okay.
I, I, I think exactly what we said earlier where we're kind of kicking the can, let's move forward with this. Put, put your vote together. You have the, you have the vote. It sounds like you have the voices and let's move forward so we can continue business.
Okay. Okay. The motion is to postpone for 30 days, at least 30 days to the next meeting, which would be May 15th.
May 15th.
Okay. Polls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. It would be the mayor, vice mayor, and council member Tixada voting in favor, and council member Menino and council member Cotton voting against.
Can I make a point of order, Mr. Mayor? And hopefully this will set some clarity. I'm going to make a motion to appoint our city manager to be the lead negotiator for the Garden Street Avenue project, talking to Scientology.
That should be an independent party.
I would amend that to point person.
Lead negotiator, point person.
She's offering, she's been doing it.
But we just ran into this issue where she, she's been doing it, but she isn't doing it. So I'm making a motion to make her the lead negotiator in dealing with Garden Avenue with Scientology.
We can consider that on new business, I guess, at the end. I mean, this is not, it's not worth respecting agenda.
Mr. Margolis, am I allowed to do a point of order and bring that to a motion?
I would not, procedurally, I would not necessarily do it by point of order.
Okay.
Something that I do believe that, it's germane, you know, I think to the item. We haven't necessarily moved on. So potentially a motion could be made at this time during the next 30 days or 40 days, whatever the, whatever the new date was, 30-something days. A motion could be made, I believe, at this time to specifically authorize the city manager to conduct that negotiation. Just playing that out though for a second procedurally, if that motion were made, if that motion were to pass, you know, there's still a question of, well, what is it that's being negotiated? Because there is a, there is a proposal that is currently pending before the council. And so if in fact, if in fact the decision of the council is to make that motion, to give that express authority, I don't see anything wrong with that procedurally. I don't know if it would necessarily resolve the manager's question as to what the direction is to her, however, in terms of, well, what is it, what, what would you like her to negotiate during that?
Are you wanting her to renegotiate?
I just want her to have...
I just want her to have clarity that she knows that when she goes in with our five, as councilmember Menino posted on, or said it on Monday, warm and fuzzies, that she knows that she's coming from a position of strength from the city, talking on our behalf, that we all know what she's going to talk about, and try and formulate the best deal for the citizens and the taxpayers. So, you know, if, if we need to amend it to where it's not specifically to Scientology and just to the Garden Avenue motion, I don't know how we need to do that. But it, it seems like, as councilmember Tixhada said, there's a lot of nuance in the term negotiate. So, be the negotiator slash point person, be the lead, whatever it is that we need to say in this government red tape, that we are all here in the sunshine to let our citizens know that she is negotiating on the behalf of the city, bringing us back the information and trying to formulate the best deal to get something to pass, which is her job in the city manager form of government. So, I, I'm trying to set clarity, because I'm not gonna sit in front of these people and tell them, "I'm standing here for transparency, and I was frustrated just like them," and then just let this go unattended. We need to make sure that these people know who's doing what job, what they're telling us, and when it comes to us in 30 days, these are the facts, these are the proposals, we know who negotiated it, and this is what we got, let the chips fall where they may.
So, so what's your motion?
What is the, what is the term that I need to put it to where she would be the point person for all things South Garden Avenue over the next 30 days?
I, I think if councilmember Cotton would like, I certainly think you make a motion to expressly authorize and perhaps even direct the city manager to conduct any of those discussions and negotiations. I do believe in all candor that because a specific proposal has already been presented to the council, if there is any desire from the council to either amend that proposal, modify it, et cetera, the manager's gonna need to hear that from you. So, that's the only thing I would...
And that's why I'm trying to say for all things Garden Avenue then, because this proposal, maybe within the 30 days we get another one, well, does she have to come back to us to negotiate?
I, I don't have a problem with that at all, I mean, that's what she's been doing now, she's been communicating.
Sir, with all due respect, you just said that's not what she's been doing. That's where we're so confused.
She's not been binding, she, she doesn't have any authority to bind us. So, she, she's been communicating with them, like she does on a lot of other things, we give her direction. But that doesn't prevent you from communicating with them, me communicating, councilmember Tixhada, vice mayor, we can all communicate with them.
I don't know. I made a motion to try and bring clarity. I don't, I made a...
What's your motion? Repeat.
It's whatever the elementary school language I need to present to allow everybody in this room to understand that our city manager is going to be the point person for the rest of the Garden Avenue project. So, if we've got Mac Dixon Memorial Garden, if we have Scientology, if we have Hilton Hotels come in, it's for that, everyone here knows that she is the point person in negotiating the information we give to her, our warm and fuzzies, that she tries to articulate and put together the best contract for taxpayers. We all know that that's the person that did it, and when we get here, there can't be anything that, "Well, she wasn't negotiating." I, I mean, that's...
That's what she's been doing. But, I, if you get it, if you get it, if you get it, you're being succinct about what your motion is.
You First Amendment honors, you're gonna have some awesome comments.
Let's see if there's a second.
I'll second your motion, but I think it's sad that we're still going on with this, and we have a form of government in place that the voters already voted on, we have a system that's been working, and why we're even questioning what the word negotiate is versus communicate, this is, um, this is, it's eye-opening to me, and we have this form of government, that is our city manager, she negotiates on behalf of the direction of us five councilmembers, she takes our input, brings it back, and we collectively do make a, a decision, and she's been negotiating since day one of her job as the city manager for the city. So, why we even have to be at this point of making a motion and seconding and voting on her ability to negotiate when it's the job description and duties within our charter for a city manager? This is, it's, we're wasting time of all these citizens and taxpayers in here.
All right, so let's go. For a second, let's go.
So we've got a motion second, I'm not exactly sure what the motion is, but...
Yeah, I second.
I don't think it can vote on, knowing what the motion is, so...
I believe the motion is to authorize and direct the city manager to negotiate all items related to Garden Avenue in the next 30 days.
That's motion. Say it.
Yep.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Okay, so now we go to 8.2.
No.
No, we, 8.2.
8.2, we haven't done.
Oh, God, can we just...
Is the second reading?
Oh, well, yes, so actually, this is postponed for, till May 15th because of the first motion.
So, how many, whole eight, one through four?
No, so, you've already done the other items, but when it comes to 8.2, this one... No, I'm sorry, 8.1. 8.1 is the one that's continued upon the last item, so this one automatically gets continued.
8.2. So, gen item 8.2.
All right, so, I'll need a moment to pull up 8.2.
Sorry.
All good. 8.2 is the second reading of annexation, I assume that's why most people came out this evening. So, this is ordinance number 9814-25, you won't wanna miss this, an ordinance of the city of Clearwater, Florida, annexing certain real property located on the east side of Pointcetta Avenue approximately...
Okay, guys, well, we have 30 days. I know, right? I just went and got an ice cream. I was either, either a shot of whiskey or an ice cream. And I settled for the ice cream. So, well, that made our, the four-hour, what's inappropriate, hippie chick? Good night, wise mama, thank you. Let's talk tomorrow on, on how we can get them on, on how they've messed up the sunshine law. Pour the whiskey over the ice cream, I didn't think about that. I know, I just ate a couple of candy bars. Hmm, yeah, I can't do tequila, tequila makes my clothes fall off. This is true, Sally. Hey, Mary A. Yeah, I know. A Bailey's and creamy say, oh, right, yeah, there we go. Yep, delay the vote, 30 days, so May 15th. Ta-da-da-da, well, you know what? It didn't go through, it didn't pass. We, we got it stalled. Mirzenu Marlene. Okay, so we, we got it stalled, that was a, that's a win. We're gonna take our baby steps and we're gonna run. So, okay, you guys, I'm gonna finish my ice cream and jump into bed, 'cause I'm still not in bed. I love you all, I will talk to you in the morning, tomorrow's a Friday. Night, night, all. Yep, exactly. Yep, it was a success. Little Davy's mad now.